Good evening. It's Monday, January 20, January 8, 2024. Happy New Year, everyone. And this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is a statement I would like to make. I wanted to address some factual inaccuracies in emails sent by the proponent of 250 Turnpike, disparaging the board, board members and the town planner. The town planner, myself and this board have followed the same process with this project as with any other, adhering to town code, Mass. general laws and the conditions of the approval for the project. With respect to the easement, the major site plan for this project was approved in December of 2022. The proponent could have submitted the easement language for review anytime after approval. The fact that they waited until the end of November 2023 is not on this board. The proponent bypassed the planning department and submitted the easement language directly to town council. The planning department received the first copy of the easement on 11/27/2023 at the request of town planner. On December 11th, 2023, the Planning Board discovered that town council only reviewed the easement as to form, not to determine if the easement language met the intention of the major site plan approval condition. On December 12th, 2023, the town planner requested through town administrator the process required for the Planning Board to receive a legal opinion from town council, a review to determine if the easement language met the intention of the major site plan condition. This major site plan approval conditioned, condition required town council review and the acceptance by the Planning Board of the easement prior to Planning Department's sign-off on a certificate of occupancy. This could not be accomplished through administrative action. Town council opined on December 20th, 2023 that the easement language was consistent with the major site plan condition and accomplished the Planning Board's goals with respect thereto. The Planning Board did not have availability to hold a special meeting prior to the end of the year. With respect to requests to be on an earlier agenda, on November 22nd, which was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the proponent asked to be placed on the 11/27 agenda, the Monday after Thanksgiving. Following the guidance distributed by the town clerk, this did not meet the 48-hour posting notification requirement. In addition, as mentioned above, we received town council review of the easement on December 20th, and the proponent didn't supply a bond proposal to the planning department until November 28th. So a November 27th meeting would have been pointless. With respect to the chair's bias, the meeting mentioned by the proponent for 250 on December of 2022 with the town planner and myself was requested by the proponent to discuss major site plan open issues, not the 40B. The Planning Board was briefed on the meeting by town planner at the next Planning Board meeting. I never voiced opposition of the 40B to the proponent. My opinion of the 40B at 250 Turnpike, as with the proponent's other 40B proposal, is neither support of nor opposition to, but rather are they in compliance with the applicable town code, conditions of previous approvals in Mass. general law? There are serious questions on whether the conditions of previous approvals of 250 Turnpike would preclude the development of a 40B on the newly formed residential lot, the same questions raised by this board in their letter to Mass. Housing and the ZBA. To conclude that because I in this board advocate for projects before the town to comply with all applicable laws in previous conditions is in opposition to 40Bs is patently false, but is instead us doing the job we were elected to do. The proponent took issue with an email they saw evidently as a result of a public records request. A board member had asked the town planner, not the Planning Board, a legitimate question regarding the permitted use of 250 Turnpike because the sign is misleading. Town planner looked into the question, answered the member, case closed. Nothing misleading, untruthful or factually inaccurate as claimed by the proponent, just a Planning Board member doing what they're elected to do. The Planning Board and the Planning Department have acted in a professional, non-biased manner throughout this project while adhering to town code, Mass. general law and the conditions of the major site plan approval. That concludes my statement. If anyone on the board has anything they would like to add?
Well, I'd like to respond.
I'm not taking public comment. Open meeting does not require public comment unless it is a hearing, and this is not a hearing. The next item on the agenda, 264 Cordova Road Minor Site Plan Approval. Karina, do you want to update us?
Yes, will do. This 264 Cordova Road Minor Site Plan Application. It's not a public hearing, it's, but it is before the Planning Board, as was changed per code a couple of years ago. On December 18th, Mr. Bemis, who represents the applicant P&amp;H Management Corporation, owner of 264 Cordova Road, submitted a complete application to the Planning Department, which was filed with the town clerk on December 20th. The application information was distributed to the Planning Board and to the town departments as well, and forwarded to Fasson O'Neil, the town's engineering reviewing consultant. We are still waiting to get feedback from Fasson O'Neil. We had the holidays in between, and so that should be coming in next week. I updated Mr. Bemis this afternoon about that. We also received a letter via email, some information from resident Nancy Falcone. And then because we don't have Fasson O'Neil review comments yet, Mr. Bemis provided an extension request for the minor site plan because minor site plan is for 30 days, and that deadline is January 19th, and our next meeting is January 29th. So that request would allow the project to move forward properly. So I, that's pretty much of an introduction to that. We have a plan that was submitted on the, on the screen. Also, the plans and the application can be found in a meeting packet, which is on the town's website where agendas are posted as well. So if anybody wants to look at the information, it's in that packet.
Thank you, Karina. Good evening, Mr. Bemis. Happy New Year.
Good evening. Peter Bemis, Engineering Design Consultants. Thank you. Here on behalf of P&amp;H Management Corp. They are the owner. Something that's happened in between the application submittal and today's date is that the tenant that had been in the facility has vacated, unfortunately. Although I do believe the selectmen, select board, excuse me, had made an accommodation because there was a concern about having a license in the new year. I do appreciate the board taking the time to address that and making sure that it was in place. The tenant just felt reluctant to renew another annual lease with the situation being that they didn't have everything in mind. So they made a decision. Okay. I still don't think it's going. It's, the green light's on. Okay, better? All right. Here we go. I'm gonna be like a movie star here. So to go back a bit in history, our involvement began in 2015. The then tenant that was at the facility had been there for a number of years. Louis Aswad, Louis died in May of 2015, 2019, excuse me. And some of the improvements that we had suggested during the minor site plan review in 2015 were completed, some were not. But a Class 2 license had been granted to Louis, and, and he operated that way for that period of time, up until the recent history where a few different tenants came in after 2019. It wasn't until this past year, earlier in the year, and again, we weren't involved at that time, that it was determined that the current tenant in seeking a renewal of the license needed to go back and revisit the zoning board of appeals decision. And that, that was handled in the summer. We got involved in that at the tail end of that process, and the zoning board did issue a, a positive determination for the property, and they conditioned it. And there were a number of conditions that this site plan does address. So that decision was August 15th, 23, and there were two items that had to be addressed, of which there was a subset A through G, and then item number two. So I just want to make sure that I covered the 2015 history, that there was a Class 2 license, there was an operator. He operated the site consistently up to his demise in 2019. The site plan was not revisited with this board until this application. So the zoning board of appeals process was completed, and then the, the redress with the board, select board was also completed, which is also conditioned on your review. So here we are. So the, the August 15th ZBA decision requires that the Planning Board address site plan review with special consideration given to the following items. Fencing slash screening along Woodland Road. So this plan does do that. I'll just kind of go through each of these items and then go back to the plan. Removal of a concrete island along Cordova Road. That island has been removed. Parking spaces along the southern corner restricted to employees. The reason why we designated those spaces for employees is that they would be transient. That way, the corner is open during a non-work period to provide greater site distance along that section of roadway. Delivery vehicles are to follow a traffic management plan. That was part of the ZBA submittal, and you folks have that. It's basically just saying that if a truck enters the site from the north to south, it will continue going in the southerly direction, and if it enters the site coming from the south going north, it will continue in the northerly direction so that there's not truck, attempt to reverse direction. And there was, that was contemplated along Cordova Road. The idea was that Woodland Road, if they were accessing there, would have to be, then be coming to turn onto Cordova Road, so therefore they'd be heading north. They continue in a northerly direction. They just don't go back to Woodland Road. Hours of operation, those hours are listed on the site plan, so as part of your approval, you'd be dictating the hours of the facility. No idling of vehicles along Woodland Road. Again, the traffic management plan stipulates that that will not occur. Clear demarcation of sale and transition or sold cars. The spaces are clearly defined on the site plan, and the, each cars that are for sale have a illustration on the windshield, and they are marked within the site. That's again, something that would be a condition of approval. And then the second item was that, and we don't anticipate this, we're asking for the 12 cars that the, the zoning board approved, and we're, we're not asking for anything in addition to that. So therefore, it would, we don't expect you to tell us to have more cars than the current approval provides for, and we're not gonna ask you for them. So I don't believe that, that condition should be very difficult to address. You folks know where this property is located, but just in general, this is a connector road, next to a connector road. It has two front yards and a side yard. So there's a great deal of, of street frontage associated with the property. There's not a lot of green space associated with the property. It's basically a former gas station. I believe 40's vintage. I tried to get that exact date from the assessor, but the small cards that we used to have at the assessing office are no longer available, and some of the data didn't come forward. So knowing exactly the date this building was built is difficult to ascertain, but I, I think it dates back to at least that period, definitely pre-zoning. So there's a lot of asphalt here along the, the roadways that we front. There is an existing cherry tree in the northwest corner of the lot. We wish to retain that. We are proposing five new red maple trees along Woodland Road. We are also proposing to cut back on asphalt where we can along Woodland Road, if you again approve the parking spaces and the configuration that we've provided you with. We are proposing a picket fence along Woodland Road. And there are some low-lying perennials and annuals that are located along the island at the intersection of Cordova and Woodland Road, and we would retain those. But to put anything higher is gonna conflict with site distance. Site lighting, there is currently one light fixture on the front of this building. There was an island. When that island was removed, those light fixtures were removed. So the proposal is to put two wall-mounted light fixtures. These are pretty much decorative like you would for a residential home on the sidewall of the building, and then a spotlight on the north side of the building. That would be a motion activated, so it's not on all the time. If someone was to enter the parking lot in the, in the evening time, it would come on. And it's really there for security purposes, because there are automobiles here that will be there overnight in that parking area. The planned tree planting ratio is, let's see, what do I have here? Will be 3.16, so that's well above your minimum, so we have 3.16 trees per space. On the, on the lighting, we are about 50% of our max allowable. That's accounting for our zoning district being Res B. So the residential district does afford lighting. We are pre-existing non-conforming use, but we're only seeking permission for 50% of our full lighting ratio. And these light fixtures are fairly low intensity. The two wall-mounted lanterns are eight-watt LED bulbs with 1,600 lumens, and the flood is 1,900 lumens. So they are again fairly low. I am asking you for a lighting waiver because they don't have a bug ratings. These are residential fixtures. I struggled with this the last time I had to do this for you, and we ended up using a manufacturer that, I think it was, I'm trying to remember the name of the company, but they were extremely expensive. And, and but yet they do provide you with that bug rating. These are really like standard Home Depot fixtures, and they just don't provide it. So I am asking you to consider the use and the application and to grant a waiver from the bug rating component of the lighting analysis. Everything else is done but that. We are asking you for a waiver on parking space size as well. The northern bank of parking spaces and the two along the east are nine by 18. That's the way the parking area is currently configured under existing conditions. Those are parking spaces for sale and transition only, not for employee or for, or customer. And the other spaces are designated nine and a half by 18, or in the case of the handicap space, it has the eight-foot space and eight-foot aisle to have full compliance with that condition, that provision, excuse me. We do have Building Inspector confirmation on the parking. We use their analysis in the, in the table that's provided on the plan. And we believe the site plan is in accordance with your minor site plan requirements and in accordance with the ZBA decision, so that we've addressed the points that they raised in their August 28th decision. So it's a two-sheet plan set. Again, the illustration on the left is the existing parking space configuration. The illustration on the right is the proposed. As you can see, those parking spaces are all retained, the 12, and then the, the next parking space is a nine and a half. The island is, is expanded and reconfigured so that we could accommodate the handicap parking space according to the current handicap requirements. And then the reconfiguration on the south side affords the employee parkings to fit within the existing asphalt limits and comply at the nine and a half by, by 18. If, if, if the person could advance the slide, I'm not sure who's controlling that. I'm not. Thank you. Yeah, if you just click on the seconds. Oh, there you go, Karina. Thank you. So, so on the, again, the illustration on the left is the existing lighting, so you can see that there's an existing wall-mount fixture to the right end of the building. It is there, but it is not operable. No, that's all right. That's all right. You want to point? Okay. Oh, oh, all right, all right. Karina, can, you want me to do it?
But at least we can see it here, if you explain it while you point.
So right there is the existing lantern, and then in this island was the existing, what were the light, was the light base and the fixtures, but that was removed when we removed the island. So right now, that is the, the lone light fixture that's here. And then on proposed, we're proposing two lanterns on the left and right of the doors, and then a spot that's here. And it, can you, can you scroll with this, Karina, on the slide? The light fixtures are located up here on the, the right ends. You just pull down. There we go.
Whoops.
Right.
There we go.
So then this is the spot. This spotlight is similar to what I had shown you recently for the 28 Turnpike Road site. And then this wall lantern is the, is a standard Home Depot lantern fixture with a, an eight-watt LED bulb. So that's what would go here. The spotlight would go here. Spotlight is only motion activated. This fence is similar to the fence that's located here under existing conditions, both on the left view and this view. That is for the enclosure or the dumpster, which will be located here. This fence right here is the picket fence. That fence will be located along Woodland Road to these limits here. We don't extend it along this edge because it's a site distance issue for vehicles that are turning here. This is pretty much an active corner, and we don't, we just don't want to inhibit site distance and then from the north, people looking north. The only thing was on the first sheet, I'm sorry that the hours of operation were listed there. I just wanted to be able to show you everything. So these are the meets and bounds of this property. This is the parking allocation summary. It is exactly as the Building Inspector has determined. The handicap parking space provisions, and then the waiver request for the, the alternative size for the existing spaces. And then if we zoom in on this, it can be done. It's the zoning table, ownership, and then hours of operation.
It's coming.
Okay, just a little bit.
You can see her moving it.
No, go back. And then to the, go back, and then to, a little bit this way. Yeah, up, the other way. It's right here. Yeah, right here. I was, it says hours of operation, so the very tail of, just above the drawing title. So it was Monday through Friday, nine to six, Saturday, 10 to four, and Sunday was appointment only. Well, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We've set this up again in accordance with your requirements, so there's a signature block. It's, it'll be a plan of record for you and going forward. We did that the same way in 2015 when we went before the Site Plan Review Committee.
Can I just ask, did you revisit this with the building commissioner with the handicap parking spot when you redesigned it? Because when you first talked to him, you had a little bit different configuration.
Yeah, we had the 12-foot that was there today, which had been the requirement back in the day. So it's just, this is, this is in accordance with the requirements. I didn't go back to him again, but this is the standard ADA compliant.
It's just a little different configuration than when you first met with him. So I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. I mean, I have, I had to continue anyway, so I'll, I'll ask him to give us something in writing before the next meeting.
Okay. And then I just wanted to point out as well that we did receive an email from Kate Burlingame, the building commissioner. Back in November, when he first looked at the plan, it was a little bit differently configured, and that he did cite that the spaces were not to size nine, that they were nine by 18, and that the handicap spot needed to be a van-accessible spot with an eight-inch wide crosshatch, and...
Van-accessibles, eight, but eight and eight, so it's in compliance, but I can ask.
And, and, and that's why you're asking for a waiver as well, because the spaces were not.
Yep. So the two waivers are the, the, just the, the bug rating for lighting specifically, not, no other waiver in lighting, because we're 50% of your, less than 50% of your allowable. And then on the parking spaces, it's just for the parking spaces for vehicles for sale that we're asking you for the waiver, not for our customer or, or employee spaces.
And one other thing to point out is that Mark Purple had indicated to me that a temporary Class 2 license for car sales was approved but never issued because it's issued to a business, and the business had vacated. So I just wanted that to be clear.
That's fine. Again, I appreciated the accommodation. It's just, we, we all didn't expect this to happen, but it happened. I'm all set.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stein.
So Peter, with no photometrics, how do we know if there's not gonna be a light trespass off the property?
Yep. So, so I have given you a calculation. The, the photo met, we are using a light fixture that is dark sky compliant in both instances, and... I, I also know I'm, I used a similar fixture, and we had the same conversation when we did 28 Turnpike. And, and your lighting expert, I don't see is in attendance, or is she in attendance in the ether? Not in attendance.
She's not here today.
But this is a different, entirely different part of town.
I don't disagree. I do not disagree. I'm not trying to compare the two. I, I, I'm just saying to you that I, they, they just don't have this sort of data. So if you're reluctant to approve it based upon that information, I understand that, and I will have to substitute the fixture.
I, I, yeah, it's a little challenging given the location of the site. And did you have a chance to review one of the, a butter's concerns about, they had several items?
I didn't receive anything from, from them, and nor did, did you provide it to me?
I did not. I did not. I did not.
I was not aware of it.
Letters.
Okay.
I will take care, I will take care of it before the next meeting.
One thing that jumps out at me that a resident pointed out was, like, you have in your plan hours of operation Sunday by appointment only. I mean, that could be anytime, so that's not gonna work.
Okay.
For me. So I, I am in agreement with the resident request that there be no operation of the business on Sunday. And again, if, if this was Route 9, it would be personally a different, you know, view, but it's, it's a residential area.
Okay. Well, well taken.
The resident had some, I'm sure the resident's gonna speak, so I won't go into every detail that they did, but... The other thing that they pointed out was signage, and I see on the plan you have... And I see on the plan you have sign base.
Apparently, a truck took out the sign. And they do intend to put it back up, but there's been some insurance adjustment issues retained.
Okay. Do you have any detail on the sign?
It's the sign that's been there forever, and I do have a picture of it and I can give you. I know it's located next to the building.
I mean, we are, we usually do review signs.
It's an existing sign and I'm not changing anything.
Well.
But I just identifying the base because that's all that's there today.
So a couple things on that.
Sure, go ahead.
It's I mean, there is no sign there at the moment.
Okay.
Point A, but point B, it's part of when you go in and bring a site plan to us, it opens up the site for review, so.
The preexisting nonconforming nature of the site, I don't disagree. And I will just say to you that I I'm not changing anything to do with that. And it right now it is not standing because a truck hit it and I know there was a police report and there's a insurance adjustment claim. It's underway. That's all I know about.
So I don't know how I would vote on this plan. Given my concerns about the hours of operation and well, sign base, that's what's on the plan is just the base of the sign. You're not intending, I don't, I'm still lost on how.
I'm not trying to change anything. And if and let's, again, I came tonight to introduce the project. I didn't want to just wait till we got the peer review comments. I wanted to hear your concern.
That's fair.
Okay, I'll be prepared to discuss this further at the next.
Okay, thanks, Peter.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Mira.
Hi, Peter, thank you. I share the same concerns. I think that there's some components that have to be addressed. It sounds like you're going to address them, so that's perfectly fine. I also was concerned by the number of comments by the butter. And I would like to know further how they're being addressed. I didn't realize that you didn't get that email. So I suppose we'll provide that to you and then we'll talk about it the next meeting. Thanks.
Yeah, my apologies. I didn't know I was supposed to forward those comments. They it was more of a letter.
I have no problem. I want the butters to be happy. They live there.
Ms. Barshu.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter, for coming in today. I shared a lot of the same concerns that Jesse had. One other thing I wanted to point out, Peter, was as someone that comes down Woodland Road every day, you know, it's somewhat my neighborhood in a roundabout way. I can tell you, I do have concern with the four parking spots on the south side. Depending on how they're parked, I mean, there are times whether there's a vehicle even parked out front that you can't see trying to pull out of Woodland Road. And we all know how busy Cordova is. So I just want to voice that concern that you know, if you put a sign and you've got the base and everything there again, it 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 creates a a visual safety issue, I guess, as you're trying to pull out. So that that's one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, too. I think it would be great if you could get something from the building inspector as well. I was kind of going by his last letter. It seems, again, it's not my specialty, the ADA, but it I think you've met the requirement of what he was looking to do, but it'd be good to have on record. And again, I share the same concerns. I thank Ms. Falcone for supplying us with her letters. And I share some of the same concerns as well. I know, you know, it's tough to have a business in a neighborhood, you know, and the hours of operation are very important. I know they've had a lot of problems in the past with, you know, cars being dropped off at two, three o'clock in the morning and then, you know, lights and flags and so I get it. So it actually might be beneficial, Peter, when you get the comments to to reach out and have a conversation with some of the butters, to maybe head some of these things off and find some resolution before our next meeting as well. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
So there are some landscaping things that don't comply, like the twenty foot landscape buffer along the boundary of residentially zoned property. A minimum fifteen foot landscape buffer for street planting. Nine street trees are required for the for the frontage.
What are you basing that on? The nine, because I'm looking at your requirement for parking space.
By the the frontage of the street. But the length.
Oh, you're.
One tree per forty feet.
Okay. But I have a street that I have no ability to plant any trees. I mean, the Cordova Road is the whole front. So this, that's the preexisting nonconforming nature of this site.
Right.
It's it's we wouldn't be putting a gas station there today. Or if we were, we would be putting a lot of waivers in place. It's already there. And I'm just trying to repurpose this site in in a less onerous way, I think. If you look at what what had been there, its history versus what's being proposed, it is a much less intense use.
But I think there needs to be some effort for screening because that was a huge issue that was brought up at the zoning board of appeals.
I tried to do that with this, but I I'm so open to trying to do a better job with it.
So brings me to the fence, which that's supposed to like screen the activity on the lot from from the neighbors, but it's this little picket fence. Does that meet that purpose?
I I think we were trying to to enhance the the appearance along that street for sure. I think to put any other kind of fence because of the available land that's there would would be impossible because case in point, this snowstorm, and you look at where the snow piles are, there would be no fence any longer standing because the the town is pushing the snow onto this property. There's a very narrow setback. I just don't think it's practical to 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 put something else that's here. We picked the picket fence being a wooden fence, so it's going to be a little bit more robust than a PVC fence and and also having the ability for the snow to go through it. Honestly, I didn't think vegetation would even work because it's just, it's going to get plowed over. So that's why we also picked the street trees, having a little bit more a little more be more 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 robust. Withstand.
Which makes me come to the street trees. The red maples, are those salt tolerant?
If you advise what's a more salt tolerant tree, I will certainly select it from the native indigenous species.
Okay, I'll send I'll send you my list.
Be happy to have.
Salt tolerance.
Okay. The cherry tree is doing okay at the other corner, but we planted one on the on the woodland roadside and it didn't make it. So it's interesting that, you know, maybe there's less salt on eighty five side. I don't know. But.
Or maybe a little bit better soil. There's all kinds of.
There's a lot of combinations of things, but the two, there were two cherries that were planted back in 2015 and only the one on the northwest side survived, the one on the northeast side didn't.
We previously send you the salt tolerant list?
I don't recall.
No, no.
I'm 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 open to to a suggestion on the trees.
Oh, I think that we did. For twenty, was it twenty?
I thought we ended up with the maple, though. At the end of the day, that's why I picked it. I'm sorry. I'm almost certain that's what we selected for the final tree, but that's okay.
So the special permit decision stated three employee parking spaces, but this has four?
Yep, so that was the way, because we were using the existing site plan. We didn't, we didn't know we were so understand in the process, 2015 site plan was completed. We expected that to still be our site plan. The zoning board then opted in their decision with their decision making authority to to put it back to the planning board. So we were opening up the site plan again.
Okay.
Then when I opened up the site plan again, the building inspector weighed in on the parking spaces and indicated that the twelve foot handicap parking space wasn't going to be acceptable any longer. And so that I would have to do a van accessible space that's in full compliance with current ADA, which is the eight and eight. So I needed sixteen feet instead of twelve. So I had to take four feet away from that parking area, which then compromised those parking spaces. So we had enough asphalt on the north, on the south side. But we didn't, the site plan was never shown that way. So I just took those parking spaces and reallocated it so that we would balance our parking spaces.
But if there are sight distance issues on that corner, wouldn't it be better with three parking? Three spaces there than four?
It doesn't affect it, though. I I I do understand the comment that was made, but if you look at the position of the space, it's not changing because of the fact that we added one more. I'm just using the available asphalt that's there.
Maybe you could get a tree in that space instead.
Okay, I I I will look into that. I will look into that. I mean, I I would like to see the site more compliant as well. So we will try to make this work. We just needed to have a certain number of parking spaces here.
So those spots, are those aimed down? It's they look like they're pointing up from.
Those, yes, they're aiming down.
Okay. In their three thousand Kelvin, which is the maximum allowed in our bylaw. So I would think you'd want to do something less in a residential area.
Sure. Honestly, I was challenged to try to find a spotlight that would be compliant. I think there's probably a lot of noncompliant light fixtures out there because I can't.
That's why they hired such a talented consultant because it was a difficult property.
I'll go look again, but I'm not so sure they're out there.
And are there any hours of lighting or is or is that motion detector light? Can that go on anytime a raccoon walks by?
I don't think a raccoon is going to trip it, but it it's it was for security. I mean, obviously, you know, the police, if they were to come on site and they needed to respond to something, that you'd want to have a light coming on. So that was really what we were looking at. I'm open to to doing what's necessary for that. It's definitely not going to be a high requirement. This time of year, obviously, if there are hours of operation, you know, until five or six o'clock, I've forgotten what was on the plan. I know Saturday was till four. There would be times when they might go out to the parking lots and therefore the light would come on. But it's not, it's only on demand. It's not on all the time.
Okay.
We don't have a lot of lighting.
So the car delivery hours are the same as the hours of operation?
The traffic management plan, I thought, cut that off because we didn't want to have deliveries coming in close to the closing time. So I'm pretty sure it was contemplated, and if it's not, I will articulate that.
Okay.
Because I certainly don't think it's appropriate for someone to be coming in close to a closing time.
And is the woodland entrance, is that gated?
No, we kept it open because for emergency vehicles, but that's that's it. They had put cones across, so they were trying to restrict traffic. They didn't want people coming in that way.
Okay.
But if an emergency vehicle had to go through there, it could.
Okay. All right, I think that's all that I have.
Peter, I think we did give you the salt tolerant list and that maple says sensitive. So you might want to just revisit that.
So I'll definitely update that and then we can look at, you know, possibly some more trees. I mean, it just at some point, they are fairly close together along that frontage. And then you got the driveway, so I'll look at it again.
So anything that can be done to try and.
soften it.
Yeah. Does anyone in the audience have a question or a comment? Up to the microphone? And if you could just identify yourself and give your address?
Sure. Laura Vaughn, one ninety eight Woodland. I just had a question. If we have additional concerns about the site plan, should we email those prior to the continuance? Or what's the best way?
Sure.
To get those to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Just email it to me and we will forward it to the planning board members so they can look at it ahead of time.
Great, yeah, because I did have a concern regarding the the screening, the fence, which was brought up. And then additionally, the access from Woodland Road throughout the ZBA conversations. Several members of the ZBA wanted to see that entrance blocked off. So there was no entrance or exit onto Woodland Road, which I didn't see in the site plan. So, thank you.
I'll say the site plan, you know, we did not do that. I mean, if the board feels as though that's something that we should, you know, consider, I'll take it back and we can, you know, put together a sketch that shows that. I'm agnostic on that issue. I I'm looking at it from emergency vehicles, having gone down Woodland Road and had it blocked off because there was a bus and a car accident at Woodbury. You didn't go any further and the only way to go back was to back Woodland. Well, if there was ever a need to get from one street to the other, this is another viable access. It would be cut off if something happened at the Cordova intersection with Woodland. So it's something to think about. That's all.
So I guess I would just say that the property owner was also concerned about having that entrance open because people do use that as a cut through to avoid the corner of Woodland, which caused the tenant to put many orange cones across that entrance to block it off, which for us sitting in our living room, looking outside to see fifteen orange cones blocking an entrance is pretty unsightly. The other concern was the delivery pattern because despite these ZBA's guidance, the prior tenant continued to have deliveries come in an incorrect manner. So we would have commercial car haulers pulling into the property off of Cordova facing Woodland Road. The lights of those vehicles would be coming into our windows in our living room and then the car hauler would pull directly out onto Woodland Road. Obviously, a huge commercial vehicle would block both lanes of traffic and create issues there. So it was my understanding that that's why the ZBA wanted that entrance blocked off.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom have any questions, raise your hand?
Fourteen attendees and no hands.
And just for the butters, we rest assured your information was forwarded to the planning board members. That I've received and I will forward it to Mr. Bemis.
Okay, so we continue to your next meeting, so I would ask you to to continue and and I'll put together something in advance of that meeting and await for comments from Fosse and O'Neill as well. If something makes sense, I'll try to get it to you sooner than later.
Okay.
You can weigh in on that.
Right, and again, Fosse and O'Neill indicated to me that it should be next week by the by the twelfth. I think the twelfth is the last day, right? The week of the twelfth.
Okay.
Which is yeah, next week. And soon as I get them, I'll forward them to you so you can work on those.
Thank you, Mr. Bemis. Mr. Stein.
I don't think we need to do.
Yeah, we don't need a motion because it's not a public hearing. We're just agreeing to continue and we did receive your extension request, which will formally sign. That's just for the decision deadline part. Thanks. Right, I don't.
Thank you, Peter.
Just to be clear, we don't need to vote on the extension. It's it's a discussion item.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is ten Winter Street accessory dwelling unit application. Karina, you want to update us on this?
All right. Hi, Patty. On January second, we received an application, a planning board application for accessory apartment. And what that means is that the applicant has submitted to the ZBA a special permit application as required for accessory apartments. Please note that the applicant, Patty Fiori, who's owner of the property at ten Winter Street.
Um, please note that, um, the applicant, Patty Fiori, who's owner of the property at 10 Winter Street, is also seeking a variance, um, for an increase of, um, the square footage of the accessory dwelling unit from the 25% threshold, um, and that's ZBA jurisdiction. However, as far as accessory apartment goes, a report from the planning board is required back to the ZBA with concerns, recommendations, et cetera, um, which they would take under consideration. Um, and if they don't, um, go by the, uh, conditions or concerns, they, I believe they have to state that in their decision when they write their draft decision so that it's covered. Um, so the, the application was also filed with the town clerk on January 2nd. Um, we provided copies to the planning board on the 4th. And here we are at this evening's meeting. Um, I can give you a quick little synopsis. 10 Winter Street, has an accessory building in the rear of the yard, and, um, it's approximately 1,080 square feet. And the applicant is proposing a, um, apartment, a one-bedroom apartment there with a, I want to say habitable floor area of approximately 894 square feet. No changes to the outside of the building. No, no shrink in the building. That's the size that you want to do. The current house there is a three-bedroom house with approximately 1,700 square feet, of living area. And, um, there are two driveway entrances. One is, I believe, like 40 feet long, and the other is about 80. We measured it off the GIS mapping approximately. Um, so in looking at that, um, if a parking space is, 19 feet long, it could accom- um, accommodate the five parking spaces that would be required for a three-bedroom home and a one-bedroom apartment, which requires five. Just note that the Board of Health indicated that the septic system is for a three-bedroom, um, septic system, so that if this accessory unit is approved and built, the existing house would have to be restricted to a two-bedroom, which, which has been done in the past with a deed restriction, something like that. Stealing all your thunder, Patty, but I figured I'd help you on this. Okay. The ingress and egress are provided by the existing driveways, as you can see here. Um, I just left the screen. There it is. There are actually two driveways, and the existing house is right here. And the proposed accessory dwelling unit would be here in the back. This Board of Health did approve a connection for the septic system from the, um, accessory building into the septic tank. It's already been previously approved. The apartment, as laid out with the floor plan that Patty provided, um, does show an entrance and an exit. Um, anything beyond that, any, any, any items like that will also be picked up in the building permit application at the time when it goes through to make sure everything meets building code. And I think that's the scoop on that, and if Patty wants to add to that.
Welcome.
I'm happy just to answer questions.
Okay.
It's just, it's, this is a building that's been in the back of my property, and it's basically used as storage, and I think it should be put to a better use.
Very good. Mr. Stein?
I'm generally in favor of ADUs. So, what's, do you mind sharing your long-term plans for the site? Are you going to rent it out, or are you going to?
I think my intention would be to rent it. Um, yes. I mean, it's going to be a one-bedroom, so I'm looking for adult professional. Can you speak into the microphone? Sorry.
That's okay. It's just hard for the audience to hear. That's what they buzz me on here.
Adult professional, I mean, you know, potentially a couple as a maximum.
And you're okay with the restriction, restricting the main house to two bedrooms for the Board of Health?
Frankly, but the problem with it, because my original intention was, uh, with the Board of Health, to be able to expand my septic, my septic system, the leach fields or whatever, to create another bedroom, but I'm too close to the reservoir. So because I'm within a certain number of feet, I don't, this is according to, I, I can't. I can't ever expand it. Frankly, you know what? I, the house, as long as I own it, is never going to have more than two people in it. Um, my guest room is how the size of most people's walk-in closets. So is it really going to bother me? No. I, right now, I use it as a stained glass studio.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
Hi, welcome, Patty.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just curious what the building might have been used for originally?
Well, I don't know. Be, I mean, I know from when I bought the house, but I don't know the whole, full background of it. And unfortunately, uh, we haven't been able to find, like, building permits for when it was done. But at some point, after my house was built, which was 1924, um, there was a two-car garage. Now, if you go back to that other plan, you can see that there's a small garage also. So there was a two-car garage added, and then somewhere in, I think it was the late 70s or early 80s, there was an extension added to that, the back of that garage, and it was turned into, um, like, an off, a home business. Coincidentally, back in the 80s, I had a client that lived in this house and had a, um, DJ business. I, I didn't realize this until after I bought the house, but it, it was really coincidental. So, I mean, I know at that point it was used for DJ business. When I bought it, it was that gentleman's father who lived there, and he had a drapery business. So the front building, the original two-car garage, was the office, and the back room was the workroom.
Interesting. Okay, so, so it's a kind of combination. It's maybe a historic property with a 70s addition or something like that?
Right. So my house is listed on MACRIS as a historic property. But that building was not built at the same time.
Um, I just want to say I support it. I, um, support ADUs. Um, I think you might know that, um, the Select Board, Mr. Dennington and Doris Cahill from the ZBA, myself on planning, have been looking at, um, the, uh, possibility of a ADU by law, um, that went to the Select Board, I think by the end of the year, um, and the, um, decision, uh, recommendation from the planning board, and also the decision of the Select Board was to wait. The, um, state, um, has put forward a housing bond bill, which may make ADUs by right. And so we want to see how that shakes out and if, what happens there. Um, but, um, it does not address detached buildings necessarily. Want to see what the state has to say. But the vision, I think, of what we were looking at was, um, uh, accessory dwellings within a primary structure. But that wasn't our task, but that, um, it's very interesting to see a project come through. I really support the use of a building that's already on your property.
Right.
Um, and so regardless of what comes through, um, into town and maybe for future, uh, warrant article, um, at the, and also if the state ever does anything with ADUs by right, it's, um, you know, it's still very interesting to see who comes forward. And we understand, too, that it's an onerous process, and you're sort of making that point. So you've had to go to the zoning board, planning board, and Board of Health. And so the idea of ADUs by right would be to try to streamline that process so it wouldn't be so onerous. It is onerous, so I, I recognize that.
And to make an ADU process more attractive to people, to up your percentages in this town, it has to be more simplified or less onerous, as you say. Yes.
And do you mean it's because of the size of your primary structure with the, what you're looking to do with the addition?
And just that, you know, I have to seek a special permit. I mean, frankly, I, I'm prejudiced here, but in my personal opinion, this is the ideal situation for an ADU. Because it is a separate building. It's not going to infringe on anyone living in the house. There is separate parking and separate driveway. There is no off-street parking or on-street parking that is going to be used by anyone that's living there. Um, I mean, frankly, you know what? I have solar panels. You can see kind of on the right side there. I have 28 solar panels, and most people don't even know I have solar panels because you can't see it from the street. So I personally think that this is a prime piece to create an ADU. But if it's too complex to make it unattractive, you're not going to get what you're hoping to achieve in increasing rates.
I totally agree with you, and I think we'll continue to look at it. So thank you for coming forward.
And obviously, part of my concern is that the building is bigger than the town wants it to be, in order to create an ADU. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Basheer?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Patty. Um, I'm very supportive of this. This checks off my diversity in housing. This is truly diversity in housing. It's, it's not something that's too large. It's something, as you said, a young professional. You know, some, some young person from town even that, you know, wants to get out of mom and dad's house. You know, it, it gives an opportunity, or even, even an elderly. Um, you know, I, so again, this checks up a perfect box for me, and, um, you know, I would hope that ZBA is also going to be supportive of, you know, being over the 25%. I mean, 894 square feet is, you know, small livable space. I, I don't think you can actually do anything smaller. Um, I like what you've done on the plan that you have with it, so I thank you. And I just wanted to thank Karina. This was my first, um, accessory apartment like this. So Karina was very helpful to me in answering. Yeah, I was, I was hung up on the septic, and I was like, well, why are we looking at this and whatnot? And, and, you know, it was great for her experience to explain to me how it can be done. So, um, I'm very supportive of this, Patty, and I, I, I think it's really great that you're doing this, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, Patty. I think this is a, a great project. In my, we did a roof raise on my house, and I had to deed restrict, um, my house to three bedrooms, so for the same reason, because I didn't want to upgrade the septic. Just a, a couple, um, zoning geek questions. Um, the ZBA hearing notice says the property is in industrial residential districts, but I.
I didn't notice that.
Oh, okay, so that's just incorrect, because if, from what I saw, it's just in the Res B district.
As far as I know, it's just Res B. I actually questioned them because the hearing notice says my address is Southville. We're in, it's really Fayetteville. But they said it was.
Okay. And then, just to be clear, because this is a non-conforming lot, you're not increasing the footprint on either buildings or the height of either buildings? So then? Okay. So then you would be able to, uh, expand a non-conforming use under the exemption if you don't? Okay. That's all, that's all I have. And I would like, in the report, to mention that, that, um, 174 19B5, that exemption requires that no change in footprint or in height.
I mean, frankly, to make it smaller, to fit the percentage requirement, would be cost prohibitive.
Oh, I don't care about that. I think that makes sense.
I have no intention of changing anything on the exterior. There's already two, an entrance and an exit.
Yeah, I think it makes perfect sense. It's a nice project.
All right, so we prepared a draft report to the ZBA, which outlines, um, the different aspects of this, and, um, depending on the board's vote, to recommend granting the special permit contingent upon approval by the ZBA for variance to exceed the 25% habitable floor area threshold, else meet the requirement of the code. And a favorable determination from the Board of Health that the existing septic system is adequate for the existing and proposed number of bedrooms. And then lastly, per Mimi's comment here, with reference to one, uh, zoning code 174-19B5, no change in footprint or height.
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Basheer, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. Thanks for working with me.
Oh, thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
The next item on the agenda, Status of Activities of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee at Old Water Tower Site on Atwood Street and a new possible on Southville Road. And we have Select Board Member, Mr. Hamilton here. Good evening.
Mimi, can I just add one thing before Al starts? I just want to caution you that if, if anything you discuss tonight is something that's covered by executive session, I think you want to be very careful, because by, and again, Mimi, you can correct me. You're the open meeting law guru here. If you discuss it in an open session, you would lose the exemption from executives. I just want to caution you. Is that a fair statement, Mimi? Okay, I just want to caution you, if there is something that's going to be covered by executive, by the trust fund, you may want to just skirt right past that. I don't want to see you run into any issues. That's all.
A lot of people trying to keep me out of jail.
I'm sure it's not an easy.
Um, yeah, uh, I sent a, uh, presentation. I don't know the, can you pull it up? Um, this is just a courtesy briefing, um, and, uh, so I'm here in my capacity as the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. And we are looking at two parcels, and I'm going to go really quick over one of them. The, the first thing that we're looking at is the possibility of putting affordable housing units on Atwood Street, uh, on the Old Water Tower Site. And if you could go to the next slide, please? This is just a, a, a locus of, uh, where it is. The, uh, Old Water Tower Site is within half an, half a, half a mile of the train station, just for, for your reference. And you can go to the next site, the next slide, please? The parcel we're talking about is the one here called Parcel 1, which is owned by the Town of Southville, and has been owned by the Town of Southville since the 30s. It was the site of an old, a water tower that came down in 1991. It was removed. And, uh, we have been doing some work to try and identify what it is possible to build on it. We have hit a minor hiccup, which has caused us to be, to pause. It appears that water, the common practice was to use lead paint on a water tower, and possibly PCBs, and so we're having the site tested. We should have more information available in, in a couple of weeks, and then we're going to know whether, it's full steam ahead, uh, for the annual town meeting, or whether we need to do a reset. But, um, uh, the goal here, uh, the site would support two single-family units by right. I think it's quite likely that we would like to go for somewhat higher densities. Uh, I don't know that we've, we need to make sure that it, whatever we build, uh, works in harmony with, um, the neighborhood. Um, but that is the current plan, is to, um, go to a town meeting and ask for that parcel to be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Then behind that, there is a three-acre parcel, but we're, we're not, we're not interested in that at the moment. We, we asked the, uh, owner if they were interested in selling, and they were not. So we're leaving that as it may be. Then the next slide, I'm just going to mention very briefly, uh, because this is knowledge, is we have an interest in a parcel of land on, um, 57 Southville Road, which currently has a, uh, cape that is in very, very poor condition. And I'm not going to say much more than that, other than to say that, that, that the trust has an interest in that parcel. So I think that, that the message is that, uh, for the last 10-plus years, we have not deployed the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and it is a policy goal of the Select Board to expand our affordable housing. And, um, it is, uh, the goal of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And, um, it is the goal of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to deploy these funds to produce affordable housing in the town of Southville. These are just a couple of examples of what an affordable house looks like. One is, uh, the one on the left is the standard house that Habitat for Humanity builds. I I volunteer there, so I help build those houses. The other one is a house that's duplex in Northville. It's right in the center of town. You would never know that it was an affordable house that's just a house. So any questions?
Mr. Stein.
Well, just going back to the three parcels. Parcel two owned by Forty Atwood.
Yep.
In the middle, that one is now off the table?
Yes.
Okay.
And we we asked the owner if they were interested in selling. They said no.
Okay, so we're really just focusing on parcel one.
That's correct.
Okay. And what is the status of the procurement process?
It's on hold. We we're not going to do.
Okay, but.
A lot of time and energy. I'm sorry, which procurement process are you talking about?
We had discussed in our committee sending out letters to possible developers. And I had asked a question about procurement process.
Okay, sure, I can give you the answer because I have now been schooled by the town council. The basic thing is we're going to have to do an RFP. The RFP will probably and has to go onto the central register for thirty days, the standard procurement process. And then we would, uh, the it is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that has to issue the RFP according to town council. And so then, uh, we have to have standard, um, criteria for how we evaluate those, just basically awaiting. And then we open up the bids, you know, basically on day thirty-one or day thirty and then decide if any of them make sense in terms of a, uh, a a partner to build with a development partner. But it's a it's a pretty standard government RFP process.
Okay. And then I think we had also talked about communication with, uh, a written communication with the butters.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened with that. I think.
We we put it on hold until.
Yeah, it wasn't making the agenda.
Let's find out whether we got a.
Okay.
A lead and PCB problem and, you know, which may change everything. So, you know, rather than, uh, getting everybody excited before we have the facts in place.
Fifty-seven Southville? But maybe I missed detail on that. You said something to the effect that the trust is interested in that site.
That's all I'm going to say on that because it is something to executive section.
Thank you.
But I was just giving you a giving you a heads up.
Al, I appreciate you coming in. Um, I don't have any questions, but really appreciate the update to the board. Thank you.
Ms. Breschel.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Um, I I will say I'm glad to see the discussions on Atwood. Um, I know you have the, uh, presentation that I had done for capital of the town-owned parcels. And I know, um, that I had brought that to Shopsey. So it's it's good to see that there is discussions, good, bad, or the ugly on the Atwood parcel. So, um, it's nice to see. I know, Jesse, I think you and Dorian had had some discussions, if I'm not incorrect, on Atwood. You guys had looked at that and talked to a few people.
Well, it's been, it's been on the Shopsey agenda a number of times and continues to be on our agenda, so.
Yeah, so it's just my sharing my thanks for for, you know, moving in in a direction, both Shopsey and the trust to, um, you know, find a way to, um, facilitate some additional housing in town. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Al, for coming and thank you for starting this conversation. Were you thinking of doing a local initiative on, um, Atwood? Because you said you were looking at possibly more density.
Yeah, I think we, uh, if we do more density, then you will, you'll be seeing more of me. I don't think we would do anything more than a duplex. I think, uh, anything more than that, I think, would start to impact the character of the neighborhood. But I think a duplex is something that we are considering.
And so you said parcel three on Atwood, you're not, don't have interest at the moment? But that's protected open space. That can't be.
It's parcel two.
Okay, and parcel three?
Parcel three is open space.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's shown just for?
It's just because it was a big hunk of land and I wanted to identify what it was. But yeah, that's.
Okay.
Owned by the town and it's, uh, open space.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, there's some hornet's nest I don't want to poke.
Very good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Al. Appreciate it.
I did get your phone call and I figured it was answered in the prior.
Got the false.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, MBTA Communities Planning Board Proposed Overlay Districts Process for Use, Process Used for Selection and the Next Steps. That you or is Colleen going to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm having a little bit trouble with sound, so if Karina can help me out a little bit, but I'll pull up the maps.
So as Colleen is doing that, Colleen is my, um, business admin to planning and she's facilitating from home today because of the snow. Um, they got hit further north a little bit heavier, so, um, she had some troubles getting in. So the, um, planning board met on January third. I believe it was a Wednesday at one o'clock in order to have a final working, well, a continued working session to, um, come to terms with selecting, um, overlay district areas to meet the MBTA communities requirements, which again is, um, ten acres within the half-mile of the train station, um, fifty acres total in the town, which then required, um, twenty, a twenty-five acre contiguous portion of land. And then also, um, fifteen additional acres, no less than five acres in size each. So, um, culminating out of the, um, information forms that happened last fall, the mapping sessions that followed that, and then the, um, working sessions that the planning board had. These are the currently proposed, um, MBTA community districts overlay areas. I just want the, um, public to note that it's our intent to publicly advertise for a public hearing on January twenty-ninth for the zoning amendment, um, at which time the public can provide comments and, you know, more information if they choose to. Um, but that's a requirement by state law that, um, all zoning amendments have a public hearing with the planning board. So that will be generally the next step. So I don't know if you want, Colleen, would you like to explain the areas?
Sure. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, so this first area is down by Southville, um, road. And we had sort of a couple of selections to go with. And that was the work session prior to the last work session. And they really did a great job whittling it down. And then we whittled it down yet again with Bowler, um, which is our engineering firm that's helping us with this. And we added a couple of parcels right around here, just to make a connectivity for the contiguous district. These are the parcel numbers over here and the addresses, if it's not a zero. So this area, um, half a mile from the train station, we needed to have, uh, twenty percent of the fifty. So here's our ten percent right here. Um, and then we have Bowler, who has taken, our engineering firm, has taken, uh, this information and they're starting to plot it out for us. And there's a very confusing, uh, compliance model, um, that I've got a short lesson on last week. Um, and they're going to put it through that to see if it actually qualifies to be a MBTA district. Um, so that's where we are in the in the process. We should be hearing from them, I think, in a week or so. Um, so this one is the first area. And these areas are, the way I listed them were by the way they were voted. These were the top districts that were voted on at the mapping sessions. Um, so the second highest vote getter was Area Twenty-One, which did have a little parcel over here, but we didn't think we needed it. And this is the, um, Marlboro Tech area in Southville. I don't think you can even get here from Southville. But that does give us fourteen acres. They did sit it was, um, they did advise us it was okay to have just a one lot, as long as it was over five acres. And then, let's see, Area Seven was Turnpike Road. Road, and this is Madison Place, which is a multifamily, um, forty-B that was built. I don't know the year, but it wasn't too, too long ago. And then there's a few parcels. One here, one here that we've added, this little one buried in here. But so this, these are the addresses of what we added. Um, and these are the acreages. So it's actually a great area to have our twenty-five, um, acre parcel. And we'll see if, um, Bowler gets us into the compliance model and it works. So those are the three basic, um, major districts that we're looking at. And just in case something came up that didn't work, the planning board took the initiative to to keep this rolling and picked a few backup areas, we're calling them. Um, so this area right here was also the fourth highest vote getter. And this is along Boston Road. This is a, um, trailer company, shipping company, and then the two properties next to it. So this would only make, um, a nine-acre parcel, but it it could be a district because it's over five acres. We may or may not use that. Um, and this area was another backup area, which has a lot of wet here, but it does, um, meet the ten acres. There's really nothing on them. I think that's probably because it's so wet. And that was our next thought for, you know, extra areas that we might be able to use if we're having trouble complying. And I think that's it. And we we did send this off to Bowler, so they're working on it. And we're hoping our next presentation will be a little bit more definitive.
Thank you.
And just to quickly add, uh, Bowler Engineering is our, um, consultant who is working under a grant from Mass Housing Partnership Program, which the town got a twenty thousand dollar grant. And, um, what they do now is they take this information, the lots, and, um, they review the underlying zoning and, um, the proposed areas. And they put into a state-created compliance model. It's a, it's an application that has to run and tweak everything to make sure that, you know, even though you have this acreage and there's some excluded land included in it, that you can meet the density level for the town of fifteen units per acre. So one area might not meet that, but another area may be able to have more. But in general, the average is that the fifty acres will average out to fifty unit, fifteen units per acre. Um, and that'll be tested in this model. So the, it takes a couple of weeks to run that and the consultant's working on that step right now. In addition, um, they'll be providing a draft bylaw for which the planning board can, um, review and tweak during the public hearing phase.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
So I really feel like the planning department has done a great job getting us to, uh, the point we need to be at to be in compliance with, uh, the state initiative and to be prepared for the public hearings. We have to come up with, uh, a certain criteria to put forward, uh, something for the public hearings. I feel like the, uh, resident input has been, um, big. A lot of people have come to our mapping sessions and had input. A lot of people have attended even our working groups. I think we had, um, over ten attendees at the last working group session. Uh, all of this has been done in an open meeting, uh, following the open meeting laws, uh, with full transparency. And I look forward to the public hearings and, um, seeing what comes of it. And and, you know, I feel like we're we're doing our function as a board to, uh, to keep this process moving along. Whether an individual resident is in favor of or against the MBTA communities, it's something that has to be dealt with. And, uh, the board is in the, and the department is doing, uh, a great job, in my opinion, of, uh, fulfilling that function. Thank you.
Mr. Marion.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Colleen, who's really spearheaded this, um, and has also guided the board throughout the process. I'm really happy to see, um, the output and that, um, in order of, um, the way that the public has has given us that, um, guidance. I hope that others, um, continue to join in the public process and come to our hearings and also, um, support the final, um, warrant article that's, uh, going to be put forth at town meeting. So thank you to the public and I hope you continue to participate. Thanks.
Ms. Breschel.
Thank you. Uh, I I second everything that's been said, um, as well, thanking Barney, um, for being so instrumental, working with Colleen to to get us where we're at on such a short timeframe, in in trying to get something done for town meeting. Mimi, when will the public hearings on this start? Just so the public and those that are watching can start to prepare.
So, um, it's our intent to place, uh, send the public, the legal ads to the newspaper this Wednesday, um, so that they'll post two Mondays before January twenty-ninth. So they open on January twenty-ninth.
Okay, our next meeting. Okay, so anybody watching that's interested, um, would certainly look forward to any continued public comment from, um, everyone. And, uh, January twenty-ninth. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'm sorry, just in case anybody was interested, I did pull up the, um, uh, compliance model. So this is kind of the, this is page is kind of the end result, where they they model the unit capacity. This is the, they're calling it District One for South Station. And the unit capacity is, um, equal to the ten acres times fifteen units per acre, so a hundred and fifty-two. And that's working for us. And these come through.
Is that from Bowler calling?
No, this is the one I sent to you guys earlier from, uh, Andrew Faff. He's gotten quite good at adding, um, the, uh, information in, which all feeds. There's all these checklist down here, areas, parameters, District One, Two. He's got a whole lot of things that all come together on this page and it gives us a good idea of where we're going.
Okay.
And it it even even Bowler said we looked like we were in a good spot. So Andrew said the same, so I was feeling very good about that.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to be clear, um, Andrew Faff is a resident in town and he took it upon himself to learn this compliance model, um, in effort, in partly in effort to provide input, um, during the mapping sessions, et cetera, information sessions. So it was good, he came by and he showed Colleen the model and what it looked like. So that was very helpful. We appreciated that. Um, I just also want to point out that we received, um, a couple of comment letters and emails from Paul Cotter. He is at six Hillsdale, Hillsdale.
Hilltop?
Yeah, um, he couldn't make it tonight. I think he was out of town. But those in those comments were provided to the planning board members, um, for their input prior to this meeting. I just wanted to point that out because he's been attending and providing a lot of input.
Mimi, we have one hand raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, let me see, is anyone in this room have any questions or comments on MBTA? Okay, Colleen, those, we'll go to the Zoom room.
This is Eric Glazier.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you, um, identify yourself and your address, please?
Yep, Eric Glazer, Nine Skylar Drive. So a general question for the planning board. So a general question for the planning board, as the MBTA process proceeds. And if we're to a point where we actually start breaking ground on developments, what is the, the board's view at this point, if you have one, around the affordability component of any developments? Um, i- is it expected that any development would require or be needed to have a ten or twenty, or whatever the percentage may be? And does the board have a view at this point, or is that something that'll get figured out later on as this comes to more fruition? Thank you.
Um, I think the, the board is generally, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, generally in favor of uh requiring the maximum ten percent affordability that the state will allow.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Colleen?
And no hands raised.
Okay, very good. So we look forward to opening the public hearing on the twenty-ninth and on to the next item. The next item on the agenda, two fifty Turnpike Road Self-Storage Facility, Major Site Plan Status Drainage Easement and Bond Proposal. Can you update us, Karina?
Can't keep it all in my head.
Ah, everybody.
Okay. If you recall back in late twenty-twenty-two, um Ferris Development came in and permitted a self-storage facility, uh major site plan approval. They had received a ZBA special permit um prior to that. Um, that did indicate interior work only. Um, but a special, uh, a major site plan approval was um granted. Then um one of the conditions was that a drainage easement be provided prior to certificate of occupancy. Um, we now have a final drainage easement language that's been vetted by Town Council um for form and substantive, substantively. Um, i- indicating um in a response from Town Council that it does meet condition number five. Um, we also have a letter from um Mr. Chavel representing Ferris Development proposing a bond for the remaining work, which included um a fence, a gate and landscaping that was still part of um the self-storage facility. The intent, I believe, is that at some point in the future, Ferris Development will be coming forward with a contractor's yard building, which is currently in front of the ZBA for two buildings on a lot and two uses on a lot.
Right.
Okay, um.
The next area on that matter for the ZBA is next Wednesday, the seventeenth.
And that meeting, yeah, okay, Wednesday, thank you. The next meeting will be, the ZBA will be on the seventeenth next week. Uh, that's been continued to that. So um the Ferris Development is seeking a temporary certificate of occupancy um in order to open the facility and these were the two conditions. Typically, we require an ASBIL review, um, a bond or something or um, Fussin O'Neil, the consultant will say XYZ hasn't been completed yet, but the um Ferris Development has provided a breakdown um in the amount totaling eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. And I think we discussed this at the last planning board meeting. Um, so that's where we're at. Um, so, well, hand it over to the board. Unless I forgot anything.
Okay, thank you. Hello, do you have anything to add to what Karina said?
Good update from this here, the hearing that this board had on Monday, December eleventh. On Thursday, the fourteenth, we were out at the building with the building official and also a fire department official. And they conducted their final walkthrough and the building official said that the building's interior improvements were satisfactory to him. And so he was ready to issue a certificate of occupancy subject to this board's feedback regarding the site plan. And then, as the planner up mentioned, on December twentieth, Town Council weighed in and approved the easement as to both form and substance. My client has signed that and so it's ready to be recorded at the registry as soon as this board votes to accept it.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
To me, this is a pretty straightforward matter. And we were very uh apologetic for the position that the board was in when we last met. We didn't have Town Council's review of the easement at that time. That was the only missing piece, at least in terms of my vote.
I respect.
So I do not see any need to escalate the discussion beyond that. And to do so, in my opinion, would only serve to uh defeat the purpose of this agenda item. Which, as far as I'm concerned, is to approve this now that we have Town Council's review. It's very simple and straightforward. There's no need to get into uh any, you know, perceived conflicts or uh or issues, really. And, and I have to uh stick up for our chairperson. Um, I don't, I, I, I've been on the board for I think ten years or eleven years. And um, so I know how this stuff works. And I, I haven't seen anything uh other than proper process procedure and transparency with any, any of the uh agenda items that Ms. Latrell has handled. So um you know, I hope that we can move on from this. And um you know, keep in mind that the board are volunteers who have many, many items that come before us. We have to treat all proponents effectively with the same fairness, follow the same guidelines for whoever comes before us. Uh, keep the best interest of the, of the town in mind and balance that with the best interest of the proponent. Um, and it's not easy. It's not straightforward and it's, it definitely has been an education for me. Coming, you know, from purely the private sector uh back in, what was it, two thousand and twelve, I think, when I got on the board? And thinking that I understood the, the machinations of town government, and boy, I can tell you, I didn't. And it's been um a real education for me in terms of uh patience and tolerance for uh the way things actually work in town government. Um, and open meeting law is a big, big issue. And I can tell you personally, I don't know anybody who follows open meeting law as diligently as Mimi Latrell. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Maria.
Thank you for coming in. Um, I have all the information I uh need now and would be ready to vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brashel.
Um, the same. Thank you, Jesse, for saying that. I don't know that I could have said it any better than you did. And um Mimi, thank you for always making sure that we, we toe the line and uh don't get ourselves in trouble. So I'm, I also have enough information. I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just have one question. At the last meeting, you said that you would forward um a list of the plants that were installed along with the invoice to, to ensure that they were native species.
We can follow up with that. We have in our office and be happy to send it to staff tomorrow.
Okay. Very good.
What we have is the order list from the nursery with species.
Okay. Um, and one other question I just didn't understand. The site plan that was submitted to the DP uh ZBA for the contractors yard, it emits the um it shows like one oak tree to be preserved, but all the trees along Route Nine and all the trees along the uh western edge of the property were to be preserved. Why was that admitted off of the?
That would have been an engineering oversight. And I want to be clear about what was filed with the ZBA for the pending special permit was just to show them the footprint of the contractors yard.
Okay.
It wasn't intended to be a superseding site plan or anything like that.
Okay. Very good.
I want to say it again. We've talked about this before, but upon ZBA issuance of the special permit, if they'd be so kind to do that, we understand that modification or a new major site plan will be required and we'll be back before this board to achieve that before the contractors yard would proceed.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Uh, so the motion is that the planning board uh support approval for the um certificate of occupancy for two fifty Turnpike Road Self-Storage Facility.
Certificate?
Yes.
This is a temporary certificate. We're signing off on a temporary because you have the bond and once the work is completed, it's a full certificate. I think that's what was discussed previously.
Do I need to, yeah?
We just say it's, it's approved.
Yeah, I'm just changing my motion for temporary and um referencing the bond. Thank you.
If, if I may, uh, would you consider also including the motion acceptance of the drainage easement as approved by Town Council?
So moved.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demurea, yes.
Brashel, yes. Thank you.
So um, are you going to provide a cash bond that goes into the escrow?
We have a decided, uh, bond. We're a bond agent tomorrow about it.
Okay, and I'm just for clarification, do I wait until I receive that bond before I can sign off on the plant, on the temporary certificate of occupancy for planning? In other words, do we need the bond in hand? So as soon as you get me that bond information that shows that you have the bond and I can provide that to the treasurer, then I will go on to the online software and sign off for planning on the temporary certificate.
Right.
And you'll get me a copy of the recorded drainage easement, right? So I don't have to go find it somewhere. Okay, super. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is the residence um at Park Central forty-B. I don't have anything for this other than to mention that they're before the ZBA on Wednesday, the tenth, and I um reached out to Lara Davis, the uh the administrator for the ZBA to see if there were, she'd received any updated information and she has not at this time. So it's unclear what, what will transpire on Wednesday. But I plan on being there, but we do not have a meeting posted. Anyone else have a question or comment on this? Karina, do you have anything you want to say on this?
Nope.
Mimi, I have just a, I have a comment. In our, in our minutes, I, I had caught a typo and it made me um the minutes from the last meeting that was posted, planning board at the ZBA on uh Park Central. There was a um a resident that made a comment about the truck exclusion on Flag Road that just went through. And it was sort of dismissed because they weren't really discussing that. That's reflected in the minutes. However, it has um brought something to my mind that there's a truck exclusion on Flag Road, um, which means that um trucks that would be up in that area, should the project be approved, couldn't use Flag Road. They couldn't, you know, Bantry and Tara roads go into Flag Road. I think it's a really important point. I don't know what to do with it. But just to say, it was a very, very important point that was brought up by the butter. And of course, the truck exclusion got put on the road. The signs of maybe a year or so ago, signs only recently have gone up. But with a truck exclusion, I don't see how Bantry and Tara could um you know, feed, which feed into Flag Road. I don't see how that road could be used. Um, it's something, maybe a point that I hadn't appreciated before.
That's a good question. So I, so the last CBA meeting, I think, was the covenant and traffic, but I think most of the discussion was the covenant. And then so, and I think this one is listed as the covenant, but if, if this moves further forward, further, certainly that needs to be brought up.
Debbie, do you remember what meeting, what date that that meeting was?
Um.
If you don't, I can, I have it in my office. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, I know we'll be looking at the minutes tonight and the, the butter's name um for some reason, I think it was November twenty-seventh, but I'll, I'll get back on twenty-ninth, yeah.
November twenty-ninth, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was a minor point that was made, but it's actually a very important, important point.
Anybody else? And we'll move on to the next agenda item. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Building Expansion Project Status.
Karina? Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, okay.
May I stay here?
Um, it's probably best to sit in the.
I'll sit in the audience.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep Mr. Lit company.
Mimi, can I ask a question? I can sit for this discussion, even though I wasn't part of the prior discussions. Am I?
Oh, I think so.
That's a good question. I, I think that this is a new am I mistaken that this is not a new item? To me, it is a new item.
So the project was voted on and they received their major site plan approval and lower impact development for the building expansion project, as well as the modification to the major site plan for the sound barrier wall. And that's all permitted.
Um, yeah, but I, I think that a new member, like I, I sat in on things that.
Right, yeah, so this isn't, this isn't a continuation of a hearing or anything. It's just. I just, always going to ask the question because you may not rate an issue for anybody.
So construction.
Happy to sit. Thank you.
Yeah, construction is coming towards closure and um the applicant is end goal here is to get a, is seeking a certificate of occupancy and they want to just explain where they're at in that nature.
Yeah, and it, it's a temporary that we're looking for. Uh, Bill Pizzone, I represent Ken's Foods. I see you all. Happy New Year.
Welcome, Happy New Year to you.
Up there, I didn't, I don't care. The client doesn't care. Uh, this has been a long process, obviously. And uh, Ken's has completed the project as approved. But we found that the driveway going into the back, and I'll let the engineer talk about this more. We wanted to uh widen that area a little bit and move some pavement around. It's nine hundred and twenty feet. It's not a big issue. Fussin O'Neil has spoken to it. They said they don't see it as an issue. What it does is just makes better line of sight for the cars going to the back. So they can see going out into where the traffic is better. Uh, and that's what the letter you got from Fussin O'Neil has spoke. Uh, we have submitted uh all our ASBIL plans to date for the project the way it was approved. Sure.
They're not, they can't.
Okay, uh, yeah, the ASBILs have been submitted for the project as it was approved. Fussin O'Neil has them. They've had them for a week or two now. Uh, and Ken's has an operation going on there. It's been going on there. The building inspector has gone out and checked the addition that was built and the internal components of that and has signed off on that, but he won't let us store in that back part of the facility. Uh, we'd like to be able to store back there and move product there. At right now, what we're doing is we're having to run a lot of trucks through the night, through the day to bring product over because we're, it's going out the door. If we could fill the back section with product, it will make it a more consistent and time-sensitive and controlled traffic flow from Ken's to Marlboro to the facility. So it's, it's not like we're, we have a facility that we're asking for temporary CO to start production of movement. We're in operation, continuing to do operation. And in fact, it will make it probably less onerous. There won't be fleets of trucks coming from Marlboro at one time to fill the facility. It'll be filled slowly on a regular basis. So we're looking uh tonight, if we could, to uh get a temporary CO uh to utilize that back section so that the uh building inspector will be okay with that. He's the one that asks to get it. Uh, the sound wall's up. It's been up. Uh, actually, it would probably be good if we had the place running at full operation while all the leaves are down. So we can make sure that the sound wall is working properly as well. Uh, so if we could get to that, that would be great. Uh, we have a bond in place for the plantings that are on the uh east side of the building where we had to do the plantings. That's all covered and taken care of. If Fussin O'Neil comes back in the next couple of weeks and says, well, this is wrong, we need a bond or something, we're happy to come back on at the end of the month, but it's incumbent that Ken's gets to start to use this multimillion dollar project that they built that's sitting there idle, especially when they've been such a good neighbor. They spent over two million dollars putting sound walls up around that facility to make sure they were a good neighbor. And I think it's incumbent and allowed by the board to grant that. and I think it's incumbent and allowed by the board to grant that.
So just to be clear, when did we get the ASBIL? On the 2nd?
On January 2nd. So we received ASBILs on January 2nd.
It's a week.
So the process is that when you submit ASBILs, and we haven't had coordination for Fussin' O'Neil to be on the site since July, and the sound barrier, there were milestones that were required for Fussin' O'Neil to be out there. So it is true, there was a request for a minor change to the paving in the back left corner near the sound barrier wall, and because that appeared relatively minor, we sent that to Fussin' O'Neil for review. They responded saying that it was no significant change. It was a minor amount of paving they were adding, and they were removing it somewhere else. It was also vetted by Conservation Commission, who had no problem with that change as well. So that's fine, and you haven't built that yet, because the plant's closed. So that would have to be picked up in ASBILs as well, when you do that.
Right.
But you just submitted the ASBILs, and we need to schedule Fussin' O'Neil to review those ASBILs to see what is not completed yet, so that what's not completed has to be covered in a bond. Okay, that's the process, and that's required in the code 174-10J. And so I just want the planning board to understand that it's the same process that we have to go through.
I believe the ASBIL that was submitted took into consideration all the changes that have gone on there over the last 15 years, to make sure we had one set of plans that looked appropriate.
Correct, and I think that was a condition of the permit.
A lot of it isn't new work that was done, it was just detailing it, it was out there. So it's not like there's work in the area of the facility where trucks are coming in, that there was a lot of work done, or it was minor work, basically.
Yeah.
So it's not like there's a lot of construction work that now needs to be looked at, to see if it needs to be bonded. It's been in existence. The major construction was the sound wall, which is off-site, basically, and just off the pavement in the building on the far end, the east end.
How big was that expansion? I think it was 60,000 square feet, right? Which required a access roadway around to the parking area, and it required relatively significant planting. We do have an $11,400 bond, or 11, somewhere, for the meadow that was mitigated prior to, you know, it was supposed to be built previously, so that was a mitigation kind of bond, so we have no, you know, and I can't speak for the board, I'm just saying what I know as a town planner, that that information has to be vetted, specifically because in the past, ASBILs have been submitted, and they were not correct. So I just want to remind the board, and I don't mean to make it more difficult for you, but my job is to help you, but also protect the town.
And protecting the town, I understand that.
Yeah.
But you also have a landowner here that spent millions of dollars to get this operational, and for it to sit idle for another month actually impedes the truck traffic around here.
Yeah.
It'd be better to let it be operational at this point, and as they said in the letter, if Fussin' O'Neil comes back and says, "Yeah, we think you need a bond for this," we'll come back at the end of the month, and we'll set up the bond and put it in.
So that's all I can speak to that, is the.
Mr. Stein.
Okay, let's see if I got this. We just received the ASBILs. I mean, how quickly would you normally get a C of O?
When it's operational like this, and there was really no change to the circulation, other than the roadway.
Well, I guess, no, I'm better away from it, ask, answer, rephrase the question is, how soon do you expect the building inspector to give you a C of O?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
How soon will you get a C of O? A real C of O, not temporary?
A real one? No, we're going to have to do some work still in the spring.
It would be as soon as that pavement is done at that drive.
Yeah, this 900.
So.
That's the only one left.
Like, May or June?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not opposed to a temporary C of O, but why not let us get the Fussin' O'Neil stuff done? We can probably have it on the next agenda.
We're going, like I said, we're going into the height of their season, they need to get product there, and they have to send fleets of trucks now during the day, every day, to get product there, because that other 60,000 square feet would limit, you know, the amount of truck traffic that would have to go there. It's really for the benefit of the community as well.
Yeah, well, taking that into consideration, as it just said in the previous agenda item, we treat proponents basically all the same.
Yeah.
And this would be, to me, based on my experience, unusually lacking in diligence on the part of the board, if we supported this.
And if I could, I'd agree with you, if it was a brand-new site that was just built, and everything was just built. This is an existing site that's in operation now. It's in operation. There's trucks going in and out, there's traffic going in and out there, there's product. All we want to do is bring more product over to put it in a building component that has been built, and has been signed off by the building inspector, which will decrease, or at least limit and spread out the truck traffic that's coming from Marlboro, so.
See, I'm not 100% sure I agree with that. I hear what you're saying, but I think we have a difference of opinion on how this department and this board conducts itself when it comes to site plans, ASBILs, and.
And you already have, we know that's designated for something else, but, you know, make it for both of them, I don't care. But, you know, and we'll see at the end of the month, or whenever Fussin' O'Neil gets back to us, what has to be posted, if any. Well, I'm on the fence, and we'll wait till the other board members.
Ms. Rashia.
I'm on the fence as well, just based on the discussions that we just had, as Jesse referenced.
Can I just point out, so the planning board is fully aware that, and I don't, I'm not trying to give you a hard time here, but condition number 20 of the decision of special permit for the lid and the major site plan does specifically say, "ASBIL plans shall be reviewed by the town's engineering consultant for compliance per zoning by law 174-10J and acceptance by the planning board prior to sign off on certificate of occupancy." I just don't, I just want to make sure you're aware that that was clearly written in the decision, and I understand the business side of it, and.
And we're just asking for temporary, we're not asking for a full occupancy.
Right, but temporary requires that we have an understanding of what's remaining and what needs to be bonded still, and right now, we don't have that. I don't have that information of what is still remaining and what that cost associated is to that.
Yeah, so as well as the conditions of approval, our zoning code says a temporary occupancy permit may be issued after satisfactory completion of all essential public health and safety, which you say is done, and sufficient bonding acceptable to the planning board is provided to the town to cover all outstanding items. So we've got the cart for the horse here. We just got the ASBILs, we need to hear from Fussin' O'Neil to make sure everything has been built as approved.
90% of it was in existence, before we even went for our site plan amendment. So it is in existence, it's functioning, it's working.
I understand that, but there was a new large addition, new driveways, there was a lot of landscaping.
Yeah, which we bonded the landscape.
Well, you bonded the meadow, not all the landscaping, and there was a lot of other landscaping there, because it hadn't been completed from the previous site plan. So my opinion is that we wait to hear from Fussin' O'Neil, and that's, and then we'll hear by our next meeting, and then we'll know if anything needs to be bonded.
I'm in agreement.
May I have just a resident word?
You will, when we get to that point.
Thank you.
If I may, I'm not chairman. The, one of the issues that I think you just raised was the planting that had not been completed from the prior project. That was done very early in the project. As a matter of fact, had gone through a review process to determine and certify that it was completed in accordance with, prior to us starting any of the new work on the project. So I just want to let you know that that work, of course, has been done, and as was the drainage, you know, corrections that were made, so.
Yes, those specific items, there were some very specific landscapes impending from the prior permit that were addressed as part of this new permit initially, because they were required to in the conditions that they had to address those before they could.
Yeah, and then we're done.
So those were done, but that's still, but there's still landscaping associated with the main project at the subject project.
That's correct.
Just so it's very clear to the public and the board.
And the town code requires bonding before a temp certificate of occupancy, not after.
Fussin' O'Neil comes back and says, "Everything's fine, you don't have to bond anything."
Then you get your temporary C of O.
Yeah.
Well, why wouldn't we get a permanent?
If everything's in compliance.
You just said, there's work to be done.
Yeah, you're right, there is.
I think, I mean, I think we're ready, but.
Could Jess, David Ferris of 52 Sears Road, I'd just like to put a business context and overview, and first of all, Jesse, I'd like to thank you for your remarks. I completely agree, and I'm very grateful to this board in listening and thinking about the issues clearly, and taking to heart the comments that I've made, and that comes from a place of deep respect, and I really do appreciate that, so I'd start the conversation there. Coming at this from a similar developer issue down the street, I want to think about it outside of their frame of mind, and more from me as a resident in the community and a taxpayer. I think what we have is some opportunities in the town to increase our tax base with very small tweaks to how we're doing business in town government. By that, I mean, in this particular case, I hear an applicant asking for a temp CO, not a permanent CO. I hear potentially landscaping issues out there, and I would challenge the board to go back and say, "Look, if you want the temp CO, promise us you'll show up tomorrow with a $250,000 bond, and we'll return it later if, in fact, you have a lower amount, but give the taxpayers the increased tax revenue this year," because Ken's has been a good partner and been in this community a long time, and they're already footing a bill of close to a half a million bucks in taxes. That place is assessed at about 30 million bucks. They've dumped another probably 10 to 15 on this extension. Is my guess, just as a fellow developer, looking at it like 65,000 feet, 65-foot clear high. You're making an investment in this community at 10 to 15 million bucks. You're unbridling Paul Sibelli's hands, because he called me today to ask for our rent rolls and our various buildings in the community, to figure out what our net operating income is, and respectfully, Ken's is going to have a very hard time defending why Paul shouldn't be able to put $15 triple-net on the value of that 65,000 square feet, which is at least $15 million additional tax revenue. If this gets punted into like another two, three weeks into February, I can guarantee if Paul increases their tax rate, they will kick and scream, and they will win. And they will win because they don't have a temporary CO to use the 65,000. These guys aren't going away with a $30 million building down the street. They've already made the investment. I looked at the agenda, this is a long cycle, 2021 to 24, to use a 65,000-square-foot warehouse. I think you can build a lot of goodwill deposits with local developers by giving them an inch and seeing if they take it and do the right thing by us, the community, and the community, i.e. all the taxpayers. I mean, if Paul can put another 100 or 200,000 of tax revenue on this building for 2024, that's real salaries for teachers and firemen, et cetera, in this community. And the size and the increase of the use, going from the footprint it is up by 65,000 square feet, it's the very issue I was lobbying about last year with our building, and I think the taxpayers win by you looking at the applicant and recognizing that they're a large local company doing business in our community, and us giving them a little flexibility to bond over it in a day or two, and us holding the money to be ensure they plant the native species and whatnot. We, the taxpayers, ultimately get a 50% increase in our taxable revenue from this taxpayer in this calendar year, and that's going to happen in the next two weeks. If this waits till February, or gets kicked a few weeks, I can guarantee you it's non-defensible, because I fight these tax abatements with really good tax clerks, and I win every time when a municipality does something like this. So I think you have a big opportunity to put hundreds of thousands of dollars back in the budget for 2024 by giving them a little grace here, and then making them deliver. And I've known Bill Pizzoni for a number of years, so there is maybe friend conflict, just socially, and he's a man of his word and been a good guy in the community, but more importantly, I think Ken's has a reputation of really doing solid business, and a very good reputation in this community and Marlboro, and Marlboro's fighting, I think you should be aware, every month, every quarter, to win more of their business in that community. And by us looking at like this issue and saying, "We're not issuing a CO, we're issuing a temp CO," we, the community and the taxpayers, win, because we get the extra revenue for 2024 that helps fund budget gaps. And so I think the chances of Ken's stiffing us in the community over trees and some driveway is very, very low, and I'd be willing to make that bet. Thank you respectfully for your time.
You willing to put up a $250,000 bond?
I don't think 250, because it's only some pavement that they're going to be looking at.
I don't.
Well, that's all that.
I don't think, I, my opinion, and I'm not the board, but I understand what Mr. Ferris is saying, and I understand that point, and I just have no, we don't have anything that indicates how much is valid to be, does, I haven't had a chance to get to your ASBIL certified letter. What does that letter identify as what is not complete?
The only thing that's not complete at this time is the final pavement on the edges of that curve in the northwest corner of the project, the one that's held up because of the plant closure. All the plantings went through a very detailed and organic planting to make sure they're compliant. Gotta did a great job in locating them, making sure the sizes and the species were all the ones that were correctly identified. In fact, there's excess plantings.
So we have no confirmation on the drainage, which is an important factor. Is, you have a large underground detention facility that was added to the current one, so I just.
You may remember that in the process, start of this project, went through, there was a, you may remember the kink in the pipe and straightened out.
Yes.
Make sure that we got the full capacity of the system.
Of the one that was built already.
No, it was built, this is, this is an extension of that same, at the same elevations.
Yeah.
And the, all of the elevations work, they're all, they've all been reviewed.
Who stamped the ASBILs for the drainage?
The surveyor did.
And who is that?
Well, they, they.
That's Hancock Associates?
Excuse me?
Hancock Associates.
Yes, yes, they did. And we reviewed them, our engineer reviewed them from engineering standpoint, and we are happy with the way they look, as you know, we weren't happy with some of the things that we learned about earlier after the last project. So we've been made sure that they're working, and I believe that Fussin' O'Neil did review those drainage changes with us when they were done, when the corrections were done.
Yes, there were corrections to the prior permit and drainage, so you.
Which controls, which controls the whole system.
So you see, you know, the history is that things have gone wrong because some of the process wasn't followed properly, and then it caused it to bleed over into the new permit to create conditions that then made sure that those drainage issues were covered and the landscaping was covered. So I just want to make sure the planning board has all the facts.
Right.
And I'm not, I don't think what Mr. Ferris is saying is wrong. It's a very valid point, and each project is a separate project. We do have the code that we have to follow, but it's not.
Yeah, I'm guided by the zoning code that is voted on by the legislative body, and that's what those who elected me want me to follow.
We would be willing to put up a bond right now, not even knowing what the amount is, but a reasonable voting.
But we have no idea what that is. Mr. Robbins.
Chris Robbins, 39 Parkerville Road. It's 9 o'clock, it's almost bedtime, and I still don't understand how you stay awake without a cup of coffee at your side. What you're deciding here is an enormous responsibility, and unquestionably, I mean, by chance, for some reason, I was on the Greater Community website, noticing all the volunteers and all the towns that are doing what you do. Your work is enormous. This town is growing, and everything around us is growing. The one thing I learned, being with economic development, the competition for. The comp, one thing I learned being with economic development, the competition for jobs, housing, schools is enormous. And my recommendation is that all of our committees have a responsibility to act and ask. What is the tax impact on every decision we make to do the right stuff? It's not just a permit for the number of bushes we get. Those are important issues, but the financial implications. The ability to attract jobs, the ability, there's a housing crisis. There's a, excuse me, there's a housing cross. Help me, guys. Crisis in the state. And that's why the state is trying to mandate additional housing. Because if we can't build the housing, we can't attract the jobs and the businesses will go south. Likewise, we have Ken's Foods who took over the Verizon building that was vacant for years. And they are paying taxes. We ought to be standing here and thanking them with the president at our side and say. Let's get the CO signed on a temporary basis and move forward and make things happen. The implications financially are enormous in this town. So I just want to conclude that we are not the little shiny Southborough on the hill. That we love. We are competing in a world market. If you look at the cross section of industries in our town. The Japanese are here. The private schools bring in company leaders here all the time and they're finding places to move. And how they're received depends on whether they stay here or grow with us. You are the. Stimulus for ensuring the economic well-being of this town. And what's enormous is Dave. Grew up on my street as a kid riding a bicycle and he's a champion for this town. We have Ken's Food who lives right up on Sears Road. And they've done more for this town. And tonight ought to be a night of celebration and thanking them for what they do. But we can't thank you enough because I know you all have an attention. Ability for detail that's extraordinary, but let's leverage it to enable this town to prosper. But more importantly, to compete with those who are competing against us to take those jobs and move it south. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Chris. We're still, there's zoning code that I, that we can't. Ignore and our conditions of approval. Unless there's another.
No, I, I think that the comments from the public are well taken. We're very grateful for Ken's Foods' contribution to our town and for your, your presence in our town. And we've done business as a board with this proponent for years. And I feel successfully and I feel like the business. Has done well and grown. And I endorse all of that. At the same time. To Mimi's point, this is about, you know, fairness and consistency. I think that it would be extraordinarily. Out of bounds, if you will, for us to vote on a temporary COO without. The bonding, without feedback from Fussin O'Neil at least, on which to formulate the bond. So. I am fully ready and assuming that January 29th, that will occur. And if, if for some reason Fussin O'Neil hasn't completed their diligence at that point, I think at that point it would make sense. To go outside of our normal course of business and do some guesswork on a bond, but I, I don't. I don't see that we're in that position at this point.
Ms. Brascio.
I'm going to be honest, I'm really struggling with this one. But the process is the process and. As much as Ken's has done for this town and how appreciative we are for everything that Ken's has done for this town. I guess I'm a very process-driven person. I always have been, even when I sat on the Board of Selectmen. And. It's unfortunate that until the 29th, you would have to continue to ship between the Marlboro facility and Southborough. And I find that very unfortunate, but. We're put here to follow the rules of the bylaw and the conditions. So I. Am in the same place that my other members are as well.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What if you granted it, subject to Fussin O'Neil submitting their report and an estimate for a bond? And if it comes next week and we post the bond next week, then our temporary will issue.
Just to add to that, it's unlikely that Fussin O'Neil will return a response in a one week. Only because there's snow on the ground and their schedule is usually at least a two-week turnaround. So. I, 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 it, you know, it'd be great to say we could do that in a week, but I just want to be clear. It doesn't happen in a week. It takes three days to coordinate a site visit.
Can we at least make the request of Fussin O'Neil? That, you know, if there's any way that they could get out there as a priority, that we as a board would appreciate that.
I could probably add the caveat when I send them the information, any outstanding items per se. They may not be able to have completed a complete review. And again, this is me speculating because they're the reviewer and they have a process. So I, I can ask them all kinds of things when I submit it to them to see if they can give a preliminary or. Can they at least get out there and do major features? But you know, when, when was the sound wall completed? When was construction of the sound wall?
Probably two to three weeks ago.
Okay, because we were expecting Fussin O'Neil to go out there and review and inspect that sound wall when it was completed. But we weren't notified of that timeframe. So. You know, if we had a few instances of like, all right, come out there, we, we've got this completed, but we've kind of had nothing since the end of July. So a lot happened. I know we got the information about the pavement reduction in addition. And they reviewed that and everything's fine, but we haven't had an opportunity to ask Fussin O'Neil to get out there because we haven't got. Requested in. So I can, what I can say is I can get the information to Fussin O'Neil tomorrow morning. I can request them to expedite as fast as they can to get out there to review. With the rain pending, it might get rid of a lot of the snow that will allow them to look at the drainage features. Yes, they have been out there several times. Yeah, the, the melting. So they have been out there. I have inspection reports for several inspections. So.
I know they were out there when the underground system was being put in.
And I do think they inspected when the footings went in for the sound wall. Up until that last corner because we were waiting for you because you were going to, it was supposedly going to get moved five feet, but that turned out not to be needed. And so this other drainage thing happened.
But I thought that the contractor had asked for inspections. There was, I think it was an issue maybe in money at some point, right?
Well, that was all addressed and you provided that and you've been doing that ongoing. We just hadn't been notified of any further. Need for an inspection out there. So that's what we wait for. But I can get that to Fussin O'Neil as soon as possible. And see what we can get for. I mean, in the prior case, the applicant provided some information on a bond. Of what they explained was not completed yet. So, but those were items that were quite visually obvious. There were no drainage system issues. I mean, there was no new drainage installed there. Everything was very on the surface and easy to view. So that's my two cents.
So till, till the 29th.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So what I will do is I will send that to Fussin O'Neil in the morning, asking them, and, and they've been very accommodating. To try and expedite this as quickly as possible. And they'll reach out to. Mike Zanny or Sam Del Torre. To quickly schedule a site visit. And go through a punch list.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Karina, the, those, all of that files are.
Okay. And we were still waiting for a recorded copy of the Sound Barrier Wall Decision.
That's, that's in that same.
That's in there too.
Yeah, that was there second.
Super.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Planning Board requests for independent counsel. I think this was just a, a follow-up item. Oh, sorry, Debbie. The next item on the agenda, the Planning Board requests for independent counsel. Uh, we were just following up on, I don't even remember what the date was. It December 19th. Jesse and I attended the Planning Board meeting at which they addressed the Planning Board's request for independent counsel. To answer our questions on the 40B at 120 Turnpike Road. The reason we had asked that was because. Previously, Town Counsel had made very clear that he worked for the Select Board and he advocated for their position. And they, the Select Board had come out in written letters in support of this project. So we felt we couldn't get unbiased legal opinion on our, our questions from Town Counsel if he was advocating for the. Select Board position. However, the Select Board voted 5-0 to deny us special counsel. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Jesse?
Sure. It was the 19th. And. There were specific questions on the. Creation of the lot and which entity can legally create the lot. And I thought it was an interesting dialogue that we had with Select Board and that. We, I mean, I can't speak for you, Mimi, but I, I just basically had a fundamental, very different difference of opinion with them. They, their position is that. They did, they did not, you know, they never intended to. Portray an approval of the project. They intended to voice a general support of the, of the project. Contingent on the proper process and procedures and approvals. I didn't see it that way. I saw it more of as, as a, as a, a strong endorsement by the Select Board that could create a conflict. And I, I felt that having an, an outside legal opinion on specifically. The, the creation of the lot would best serve the interests of the town. And they just disagreed with me. So. I think that's that.
I think it was more than, there's also the question that it's a non-compliant lot. And in our code, you can't. Subdivide or reduce in size a non-compliant lot. So there were those zoning questions also.
That's fair.
Ms. Beria.
So I watched the recording. So we didn't post an agenda that night, I think. I wanted to correct the record on something and also just give my opinion. There was a question by Mr. Hamilton to both you, Jesse and, and Mimi about, well, who would pay for this? And I just wanted to correct the record because I believe it was last town meeting, annual town meeting or the one before. Where in the budget, the special council, special town council and town council were combined into one budget item. I know because I held that at town meeting. And in fact, Ms. Brascio answered my question. My question. Was, I think I asked why was it, why was it being combined or something? Was that last year? Or the year before? And it combines with the whole picture that the reason Mr. Talerman was chosen. From what I understand from Mr. Dennington is that his firm is able to answer questions if he doesn't have the bandwidth. And so it just made sense to Select Board that council and town council, special town council would, would be combined. So just to correct the record, Mr. Hamilton said, well, who will pay for this? And so I understand that it's combined into one budget item. And I don't know whether that was just for one year. I'm going to ask whether that's going to. Be for every year because it would mean, you know, moving forward. But I wanted to make note that Town Council is having office hours on the 17th, I think. And so one thing that the Select Board seemed very positive about was that we should be getting advice from Town Council. And I think we should go see him at his office hours on the 17th. I also think we need an answer. And I think it's kind of black and white. I think it should be in writing. And I wanted to maybe even ask Select Board directly, why aren't we receiving things in writing from Town Council? So I find the little notes that go back and forth kind of unnerving because I can't really follow them. And I know I think that I'm not getting them all. But I think that a bunch of us should show up on the 17th. And we should maybe even grab a few other people from some of the other boards because it's the ZBA that needs to know the information. So we grab some ZBA members, see if they have interest to go talk to Town Council, ask the question directly. And ask him to put it in writing and put the issue to bed. So that's going to be, I guess, my recommendation. I was. In, I guess, encouraged that the Select Board felt that the Planning Board should be receiving. Advice from Town Council. I know we feel that we're not getting what. You know, what we're used to or maybe what the other boards are used to. Having been a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I can tell you with previous Town Council, we received much more interaction. Including when we were being sued, but also when we had matters that were difficult and we had questions. You know, at that time, previous Town Council was available for us. So I don't think we should be defeatists. I think we should, you know, move forward. A bunch of us should show up. And directly ask him and ask him and demand that he put something in writing so that we can all take a look at it. And again, if we have any questions, then we can ask further at that point.
Ms. Brascio.
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
So should we show up at office hours or should we do a submittal for a. A written legal opinion?
Well, I think both because the Select Board said, you know, you should go to office hours, I think they said, didn't they? You know, he's there for, for the boards and committees and he has office hours.
So, so Mr. Stiber seemed to conclude that because Town Planner asked questions at office hours, that was all the. The legal support the elected Planning Board needed, which I think it's. Although the Town Planner is fabulous and takes advantage and gets a lot of good information, I think that this board also. Needs legal support.
I don't think it's a bad idea, Deb, to have, obviously, quorum-wise, a gang of us couldn't show up. But certainly two members of the board could go and have a conversation and try to get a better understanding of where he's coming from. So we can all move forward one way or the other.
I don't think he's given us any indication. Is that right? Or is it, has he given us any? I mean, you know, what, what, what regulation is he citing? What case law is?
Well, that's, so that's what I would like, instead of meeting with him in person where he'll. You know, be this back and forth and then he won't put it in writing because we've tried that before. But we did ask about the subdivision and he gave us incomplete answers. And then Lisa and I went to office hours and. Discussed it with him and went over Mass General Law and asked him when we. When he gave us a, you know, definitive opinion, we asked him to put that in writing, which he would not. Or he said he didn't say that and then wouldn't do it or something. I don't know. But I would prefer to. Request a legal opinion, a written legal opinion with cited case law.
Well, I do agree with that. And then Select Board can take a look at it. Proponents' counsel can take a look at it. We can debate the merits of that. But I do agree, something should be put in writing in the end.
Just so we're talking about the same thing here. Are you saying in general, you want letter, opinion letters? Detailed opinion letters or you mean specifically on this agenda item?
Yeah, just on, on this particular matter.
Okay.
I, I know that when I was on the zoning board of appeals, uh, previous town council did give us sort of um his opinion and he would opine and give case law and what sort of led him to the conclusion that he came to. And why he was making a particular, um, you know, advising one, one way or another. Um, and I found that very useful because I actually went back and I looked, could look up that case law and I could learn something about it because we're not lawyers. Um, in this case, uh, I think it's just this particular matter. Let's put it in writing and everybody can take a look at it and say, you know, yes or no. It's most important that the zoning board of appeals have the answer. And I think what we're trying to do as a board is, is give them something. It's a particular concern. Fusing to us doesn't make sense to planning board. And they, but, but in the end, the ZBA needs to have something and I think that they should have it in writing.
Well, if you will recall, this board discussed having a joint meeting with ZBA and town council prior to these applications being filed to kind of hash the, these things out and lay out a path forward. And um, town council would not do that. He did meet with Karina, myself and David Williams via Zoom and answer some questions, but he would, he would not come to a, a meeting.
So can we make the request and also again, I'm loving the word priority tonight. Tell him we would like an answer to this in writing before our next meeting. I mean, I think it, we keep, here it is. This is going back to what, August? These questions started? October, August? I mean, I think we need them answered and I think we all can't move forward and be educated on where he's coming from if he doesn't give us the information that we need.
Yeah, and, and I, it, it was commented during the hearing um at the select board that their, their view is that we are getting adequate legal support. And I think we need to start building, you know, documented log of issues that we have in terms of communication with town council. Because uh, I agree with Mr. Maria that for this agenda item, it makes sense to request, you know, formal legal opinion. But in general, I'm not really, like, we used to have a different system. I think for requesting town council. Aldo had a totally different like form. He, I think he had a form he had to fill out. But, you know, for, for whether you agreed with the way things went or not, at least there was some structure to that system. And we might want to think about having that as an agenda item to bring, you know, evaluate bringing that back.
Well, I can tell you early on, I, if I recall correctly, I broached that with town council. The format of giving a legal opinion request and the response back. And I think he prefers email. I mean, that's clear. He prefers to answer in email. And the problem is that we're confused because the emails are not always very clear for us. He may know what he's telling us in his mind, but it's not very clear. It's hard to interpret. So we're filling in the blanks and then are confused again. So I think, didn't we put in a legal opinion request? For this information? Am I mixing that up with something else? I thought I had asked like four or five questions.
You did for subdivision, but there were the other
Right.
issues of uh to, uh, subdividing or reducing in size a non-compliant lot.
I just want to add, um, it seemed to me that most of the select board was unaware in a way. They thought that or at least felt, took the position that, yes, you should have access to town council. So whether or not we feel that we didn't or whatever, they, I think, pretty, pretty much felt like we should have access to town council. So I think that we should just keep pushing. It's not Jay that's going to make the determination. It's the select board, right? So um, you know.
That's right. To your point, it's not so much whether or not Mr. Tallerman wants us, you know, whether emails work for Mr. Tallman. I think we need to go to select board and say, look, this is what's going to work for us in terms of clear, straightforward communication and um a structured process.
So when are office hours next week?
So seventeen.
So maybe we ask for a, a written request and follow-up with him at office hours on what the response is.
Yeah. Yeah. And when it's written, it should be given to the proponent and the attorneys. It should be given to the zoning board of appeal. I mean, one of the things that we put in the master plan, I link this thing all back together, is more coordination between the boards. So this is a perfect example where boards are trying to help other boards who may or may not have the expertise. Some of them have the same questions. And it's um, you know, I, it's not, I know it's not going to be a black and white answer, but there should be some straight information that's given. It's got to have a source. The source comes from some regulation or some case law. And then we can all debate it. Um, but I think we're in kind of a crazy place right now, not having that. So I think we should just press on. And um, yeah, ask, ask for it written. And I think we should also engage with the ZBA and, and, you know, because we have heard at least from one member who has a similar or overlapping question. And um, it's just going to kind of hang on fester unless we get, you know, um, an answer. So we should press.
So should two of us go?
Two of us should go.
I'll go. Do you want to go, Debbie? Lisa?
Okay, so next week.
Yeah, David Ferris, fifty-two Sears, the developer on this uh project specifically. I just wanted to sit back for a minute and give this board some comfort to understand that forty B was really put in place to be uh overriding piece of legislation that would be decided at the state level, not the town level for a lot of reasons because a lot of snob zoning, not that Southborough has it, but other communities do, to really create affordable housing in communities where it otherwise wouldn't be. And so I sat in a meeting, I think, earlier this week, might have been, like, I don't even know what day today is, might have been last week, with the residents on the two fifty project uh that abut the Skylar Drive residents who are facing the same application that they know is pending, that the states like one twenty decided it's ineligible site. So the state did a very careful review, a field visit, looked at the legal documents, made a determination. So you've gotten one level of state review that I think you can rely on at this point. But I think if you talk to the residents, and I think eventually they're going to show up in droves to support one twenty from what they've told me. And in large part because they are residents, like a lot of residents in Southborough, who don't want apartment buildings in their backyard. They want them placed in responsibly.
Mr. Ferris, we're not, the discussion item isn't the one twenty forty B. It's this board gaining its legal.
The point is the planning board is seeking alternative counsel or was seeking alternative counsel that the select board said really wasn't needed because there's a firm already in place that represents the town and Mr. Tallman, I don't agree with everything he says, but I know he agrees, or I think he might agree with Lou Levine, our expert in forty B. He agrees with another expert lawyer we pay a lot of money to. And I'm merely making the point to the planning board. A lot of really smart lawyers have looked at this. And they've determined it's an eligible site. The state's determined it's an eligible site. And I'm more like getting away from the issue that you're raising about, does it make sense to get town council to drill this site? And look, step back at the bigger picture and realize these are coming to a community. So when you get a good site where it doesn't impact line of sight of any neighbors, do you really want to find legal loopholes where, or force other attorneys to find a way to shoot down a project that otherwise is good for the community? That's my point. And a bunch of lawyers have already looked at it. So I just, that's just one perspective.
So, so the, the forty B parcel is something different. The other parcel needs to comply with our zoning code.
Right.
And that's where the questions are at. And we have been down the road before where a forty B was approved that was not compliant with mass general law and that was not a good situation. And the town lost after years and years and years in court. We don't want to go down that road again.
I, I completely agree. I think if you talk to all the people who've had the most ingine over forty Bs in their, in their residential neighborhoods, it's because the forty Bs ended up in the backyards of where people live and had historical, you know, roots in that community. And when you get an opportunity to put a forty B on Route nine where it doesn't abut anybody but open space, it's a win-win for the town and the community. And I think if you talk to a lot of people who've been touched by forty B in a very personal way with an apartment building in their backyard, you'll find out all those people that voted for you are very much in favor of not having it in their backyard and having it in busy corridors like Route nine. And so I'm just saying, step back and think about like the big picture and what the goals of the taxpayers and the people who live in the community. And it's really, they don't want apartment buildings in their backyard. And if the state is saying it's an eligible site, that by definition has gotten very careful onsite review.
They don't look at local zoning. So we'll um write a letter and Debbie and I will attend the office hours.
Select board?
Um, town council. And I will, um, so I think the main issues are subdivision, but I think that's been answered. And then one seventy-four dash fourteen and one seventy-four dash eight B that say that you can't reduce in size a non-compliant lot. Unless it comes into compliance, which it isn't. Okay.
Can I add one thing, Mimi?
Yeah.
Mr. Ferris to your comment. This board hasn't taken a position of support or non-support on the project at one twenty. I just want to be clear on that. One of the issues, I think the challenges, and again, this was before I sat on this board, but I can tell you a concern that the planning board had was what overturned a prior forty B. So I think going forward, it would behoove the taxpayers and this board and yourself if all the questions are answered and ironed out before this process moves along further. And I think that's what this board is trying to do, is trying to get these answers done and out. There has been no support or non-support that I've heard since I've sat here. It's just questions that I think make sense to have answered for all of us and the community as we move forward. So, thank you.
Hey, the next item on the agenda, planners report.
Thanks for your input.
That's the seventeenth, I think.
Yeah.
Colleen had sent around three dates, I think. I wrote, I have in an email somewhere, January seventeenth, February twenty-first and March twentieth are the next three dates. I just noted that. One's coming up. Or maybe it was Karina. I don't know who sent it.
It was Colleen. It was while I was out.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess it's usually ten.
So just a quick update. Mimi had um sent some questions, follow-up questions to um select board chair Andrew Dennington regarding the public shade tree, uh, uh, the public shade tree that was removed in violation. And let's see here. I think that they were, the last that was heard was that the um a letter was delivered indicating the non-compliance and that they hadn't heard back yet. I'm not sure if there was a language barrier or something, but the select board was still waiting to hear back on that issue. The planning board had also asked in the past about the um, the park at Saint Mark's Street and the mitigation of the stone wall and the public shade tree to have a response in writing. Um, I think that he said they were going to work on that and provide that. And then thirdly, um, uh, let's see here. Oh, the plantings at Saint Marks Park. That was all part of that, address that as well in writing, have that in.
Yeah, I just, so they, I don't know if you noticed, they've been planting at Saint Marks Park. And I don't know if you know, it's December and that's usually not um standard planting season. So I just wanted to make sure that the town was covered when everything's dead in the spring that it can be replanted. So uh, select board chair confirmed that that is the case.
Who's doing the planting?
Whoever their um contractor is.
Oh, I can't remember the name. Oh, it's on the tip of my tongue. I actually don't remember.
Someone who knows you shouldn't, shouldn't be planting in December, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I saw the grass was the spray green. I'm assuming that's grass. Uh, I know.
Hydro seeded.
Hydro seeded, yeah.
Right. And they also um yeah, and it was confirmed that the stone dust path was appropriate and all that in correspondence with the DPW. So um, one of the things that's coming up um is that um the DPW was concerned with when we get aspils and that um for example, if you have a subdivision and they put the infrastructure in, which is the water and the drainage, then they pave and they have septics or whatever. Before the lots get released in a subdivision, that aspils be requested for the, for the services. Um, in order to ensure that they were built. Now, we do have Fussin O'Neil do inspections at the time. So I'm going to talk to um Bill Kundoff about that DPW director, um, just to get some more feedback. But just be aware, he's asking that he would be requiring that for streets that are um going to be made public in the future. And it makes sense. So we'll get back to you on more, more of that. And subdivision rules and regs are not zoning amendment. It's in front of the planning board if we update those, as is the standard street cross-section as we discussed going from fifty to sixty. So um, soon as we get a little breathing time, we'll jump on those items to see where that takes us and if we want to update the subdivision rules and regs. Because we also need a new cross-section drawn and maybe he has VHB doing that or something. I don't know. I'm just guessing that he has something in the works there that would work, especially for tree planting. That would allow more space and not impact the sidewalks later that's put in. Okay. That's okay. Oh, so um, we're preparing an annual report that we do every year for planning. So Colleen is working on that. Um, it's pretty similar. Every year we just give a quick update on any new things.
Um, thanks for reminding me. Um, the master plan implementation committee would like to provide a statement for that. Our chair has written one for, for last year, but um, I think we just identified that we need to do it. And we were wondering what the deadline is and if we've missed it. It sounds like we didn't miss it yet.
You didn't. Um, on the standard budget calendar, it indicated that the annual me, um, reports were due to the select board by January fifth. But Melanie Atsuko, who's the executive assistant to Mark Purple, said they're due June, uh, January nineteenth. And she provided like a word document sample. If you want, I can forward that to you.
Okay, I, I'd be interested to know, like, um.
It's next week.
Yeah, it's next week. I mean, is there any space for something from master plan implementation committee? Can we have a few, can we have?
Into the planning board's report?
Yeah, into the replying.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We keep it pretty short and sweet. I think it's like two pages, but we always have like a half a page or so left. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just.
I'm sorry, but.
Oh, Colleen's still here. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. No, I was just saying to Debbie, it's kind of a little historic um writing. So things that happened and, you know, it's really tell them, um, people go back and look, you know, they put the um town meeting minutes in it and all that good stuff. So it's a great, great place to say what you need to say for the history.
Yeah, the final book, it's the compilation of everything.
Yeah, and. Yeah. And, um, we, as you know, are putting together the report for the planning board. And we thought we would highlight some of the things that have been, you know, maybe accomplished or something. It's, you know, last year was really the accomplishment of the master plan itself was highlighted in that section. So we don't have anything so monumental this year, um, but Judith Watson is helping me to write something. And so that was actually going to be something I was going to ask you about. So that's perfect. So I can touch base with her and we can have something to you next week.
Yeah. And sometimes I could be wrong, but there may be opportunity where you have your own section you submit to it and they add it to the table of contents, master plan implementation committee annual report. That's an opportunity, but for now, since deadlines is so close, you can.
Yeah. I mean, and it, you know, I think as a board, a master plan committee, we feel it is under the planning board. So it's planning board's really news to share, I think. But thank you for.
That's where people might look for it too.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And be aware that we received an email from Mark Purple that, um, draft or final language for warrant articles should be submitted or landed in January twenty-sixth. According to the prior calendar, um, the warrant closes on Tuesday, February sixth. Warrant to be signed by the select board on the twentieth of February and going to the printer on February twenty-third. But that was for a, um, Saturday, March thirtieth town meeting. That meeting has been moved up a week. So I haven't received a new schedule from, um, downstairs. So maybe that's why it's pushed back a week.
That was another question that I asked the select board chair and because he asked for an update on MBTA.
Right.
And, um, I asked if how flexible that was because we're not going to be ready with the final warrant article by the twenty-sixth.
So what were those dates? The the dates that we have now, which might be extended?
I'm reading you old dates. I just noticed that this is geared for March thirtieth, but that's Easter weekend. So they pushed the annual town meeting to the twenty-third, Saturday, March twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay.
And the the warrant was to close on the sixth, I wrote down?
Yeah. So I'm guessing um, thirty to third, March, uh, January thirtieth. That's why they want it by the twenty-sixth. So it's very accelerated schedule for MBTA.
So the twenty-sixth of January.
Yeah. So we have.
But before the hearings open.
So, um, on that note, the group that is doing the, um, modeling for us.
Yeah.
What's?
Bowler Engineering.
Oh, Bowler, yeah, Bowler. So Bowler is going to be writing the warrant article for us?
A draft.
Draft.
A draft. Do they have attorneys looking at it or are they using templates that they've used for other towns? Yeah.
I believe the.
They give us time to pass it by our town council.
Right. So they'll be drafting, they'll be drafting based on a model. So they, when they do the compliance model, they have to look at the underlying zoning of the areas we picked. And then they know what's required for the MBTA communities. So they come up with language criteria for the MBTA overlay. Depending on how it impacts underneath and to be compliant. It's a tough, it's a heavy lift because they have to do the compliance model, et cetera. But we're going to try and do what we can. You know, we have, um, the meetings that are coming up are, uh, we have one, the twenty-ninth of January, we have February twelfth, and we have February twenty-sixth. Um, this, so we really have two meetings, the twenty-ninth and the twelfth, based on the old calendar here, because the warrant's supposed to be signed by the twentieth. So February the twelfth was going to be our second public hearing meeting date.
So one of the ideas I thought that was brought up by Marnie or maybe some others was to have an a couple of different, I believe, I'm not sure, but I recall something like a couple of different options.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be possible because in one round, because we've been told the compliance model takes about two weeks to run. It's very intense because you have to input the layer, the areas. Then you have to understand the zoning underneath those areas. And then you have to, and that's if those areas are shown to be compliant. So they're going to test the density, the the unit density based on the areas we picked, based on what's excluded.
But and they also get to tweak, you know, it would be setbacks or lot coverage to try and help it work out for us. So they really do a lot of tweaking with it once they they see where we land.
And it's not, Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not just one criteria. Each area may have a different set of setbacks.
Yes.
Et cetera, based on where it is. You know what I mean? So it's quite a task. And they seem to be on top of what they're doing. So we can just wait. We, yeah.
I just remembered that I forgot to ask, do you think that we should invite the select board to the opening of the hearing on MBTA? To start the communication between the two boards, since this is going to be a heavy lift with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, good idea. Okay.
So can I add one thing, Mimi, just for thought?
Sure.
So, um, in the past, when we've had something that lingered like this, I've seen, uh, the town manager call a special town meeting within the annual town meeting. And I did check into it and it takes only twelve days to post. And we can just, they they call a recess, you open special town meeting, you vote on it, and then you close and you go right back. It's something maybe we should look into just be, or it's an option I thought to, um.
So does that give us more time for a completed warrant article? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, it would, because it would be, it wouldn't be on the, um, regular town meeting warrant. It would be a special town meeting with that one article.
Do we need to get signatures for a special town meeting?
No, but it does have to be approved by the select board.
So I guess we keep that in our pocket and see.
Yeah.
See where we get.
Could you also call and just ask for a special town meeting?
Yeah.
After town meeting, if you needed two weeks or whatever, or a month. And just the problem is that when you're at annual town meeting, you have more people.
That is the whole difference. And that's why, you know, if you're going to, if you have something that's just missed the warrant and you just wanted to finish something up. You really want to do it at the town meeting, but you do get that little wiggle room, you know, of two weeks. And that has to do with the, um, oh my gosh, the moderator and whoever the guy that posts it is, what are they called again?
I don't know.
Paul Samina would know about it.
Oh, constable, Colleen?
Yes, yes, that's the word I was looking for. Thank you very much.
That came from the genius, Mr. Lit.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Lit.
Okay, so maybe something to talk at the meeting, at the public.
Yeah, the public hearing, yeah.
Okay. I think if there's anything else, um, no, I think that's all I have for today. And we do have four sets of meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve the meeting minutes from November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, November twenty-seventh.
So I had a typo in one of them, and I think it was the twenty-ninth. I just want to check.
The twenty-seventh is the motion on the floor.
Okay.
I'll sit with the twenty-seventh. Any, any more questions?
Give you a second.
Any more questions on the twenty? All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rasha, yes.
Uh, next motion is to approve the meeting minutes from November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three for discussion.
I.
Second.
Second.
Oh, second? Within amendment?
Discussion?
Is it, um, um, line thirty-nine, Mr. Jonas Minden? His last name was Linden with an L.
L I N D N.
L I N D E.
L I N D E N, I believe.
L I, it's Linden.
Linden, yeah. That's all.
Anything else on those?
I will be abstaining as I did not attend the meeting.
All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein abstain.
Demiria, yes.
Rasha, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
I have a discussion on this. Line one thirty-seven, there's a extra word appeared that just needs to be removed.
Are we on December eleventh?
Yes. Line one twenty-seven.
Oh, one twenty.
One eighty thirty-seven, I'm sorry.
One thirty-seven?
Attorney Shervell, which is on one thirty-six, appeared informed to the planning board. I assume it's informed the planning board, not appeared informed.
Okay.
Okay.
Write that.
Any anything else on December eleventh? All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rasha, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve, uh, December, the meeting minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three for discussion.
My second.
Discussion?
I will not be voting on this. I did not attend the meeting.
Nothing for me.
No further discussion. All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein abstain.
Demiria, yes.
Rasha, yes.
I believe that's it. I don't think we had a chance to review December nineteen yet.
No.
Nope, not yet.
I must say, great minutes as always.
Great job by the board and the department tonight. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rasha, yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Colleen, can you stop the recording? Or somebody?